Good morning. The legal voters of the Town of Charlotte are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Charlotte Central School Multipurpose Room, 408 Heinsburg Road in said town on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, at 9:00 in the forenoon. To act upon any of the following articles not involving voting by Australian ballot and to meet at the Charlotte Central School Multipurpose Room in said town on the same date to vote by Australian ballot to begin at 7:00 in the forenoon and to close at 7:00 in the afternoon.
Do you mind if I have a shout out?
Okay, so the first article is to hear the reports of the town officers, but before that I thought we would allow Mike to talk to the state rep. If there are no objections, to give us an update on what's going on at the State House. Hearing no objection, go ahead, Mike.
Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. So, thank you, Charlie, and members of the Select Board and all of you for giving me a chance to say a few words this morning. Am I still loud enough? Okay. Get closer? Like that? Okay. So, this is the second year of the biennium, the legislative biennium, which is a two-year term. And we picked up this year where we left off last May, and we passed a Paid Family Leave bill, Paid Family Leave Insurance Bill, and a Minimum Wage Increase Bill. And both of those were vetoed by the governor, and we failed to override the veto for the Paid Family Leave Insurance Bill, but we did manage to override the veto for the Minimum Wage Bill, so 40,000 of the lowest-paid Vermonters will receive a raise beginning in January. So that's, I think, good news.
Yeah.
Climate change has been an issue for quite a long time, but last year it seemed like the issue became really energized among the public, and we had a lot of demonstrations and marches on the State House, and students coming to visit our committees and asking us to do, to take some real significant steps to address the climate crisis. And so, we, a number of legislators and our leadership decided that we are going to do something significant this year, and we have a number of bills in the hopper, one of which is the Global Warming Solutions Act, which my committee worked on during the summer and the first couple of months this year to pass. And we had, it's a really good bill, and it puts into, it makes the targets for greenhouse gas reductions in line with the Paris Climate Accords, which Vermont agreed to, puts them into, makes them requirements as opposed to just goal. And it requires a climate council, establishes a climate council that will create a plan to reach those goals and make Vermont, make Vermont required to meet them. So, we had overwhelming support for that bill, 105 votes to 37, and it was tripartisan. We had Democrats, Republicans, progressives, and independents voting for it. So, that's going to form a foundation for our further work, and that further work is going to include an increase in the amount of renewable electricity that we generate to give us clean energy supply, and also to modernize our electric grid to improve reliability and help Vermonters transition from fossil fuel usage to clean electrical energy for their transportation and home heating needs. See, so, so last week was really intense. We had, we spent a lot of time working on two major bills. One was to regulate and tax marijuana, legal marijuana, sales, and the other one was to revise Act 250 so that we can encourage more development where we want it, that is in downtowns and village centers, and to also take into consideration the effects of development on climate change and also the effects of climate change on where our patterns of development exist. One of the things about the Global Warming Solutions Act is that we not only want to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, but we also want to make Vermont infrastructure more resilient and adaptable to what's happening right now with the extreme weather events that we're experiencing. So, I'll finish up by telling you that you have an invitation to visit the State House anytime. It's a great place, it's an active museum, it's a functioning museum, so there's a lot of things to learn. You can check how your legislature functions, and it's always great to have Charlotteers come in, and I'm happy to show you around a little bit, and have you come into the committee so that you can see how we work. And it's a great place to bring the kids to, great educational opportunity, so you're welcome to come. And the last thing I'll say is that I am running for reelection, so I have a, my annual survey out in the hallway, right out the door there, and if you want to pick it up and register your opinion on a number of questions I have there. And also, I have my petition for reelection there, so signature would be appreciated. And I appreciate your confidence in me these last 10 years, and I, I hope to continue and have your support. So, let's see if there's anything else I wanted to cover. And, oh yeah, so, I write weekly for the Charlotte News or the Citizen, and I hope my articles have been informative and readable, and if they aren't, let me know. So, thank you all.
So, we're now onto Article One, which is to hear the reports of the town officers and to act upon the same. So, do I hear a motion to do that? So moved by Lorna Jimmerson? Is there a second? Lane Morrison? Lane Morrison. Okay, so this is the part of the meeting where we get to talk about everything but the budget articles, which are three and four, and five maybe. So, it's pages 29 to the end of the book, and this year Mark Dillonbeck, the tree warden, would like to give a presentation on the Emerald Ash Bore business in town, and he would like to bring the screen down to do that presentation, so if we do that first and then afterwards, I was thinking if people have questions of the other town officers and other reports, we can move on to that with or without the screen, so.
So, I've asked for a few minutes to give a very brief update on the situation with the Emerald Ash Bore and the town's response to that. I think by now you all are more or less familiar with the Emerald Ash Bore problem. But for those of you who might not be, very briefly, the Emerald Ash Bore is an invasive pest that we expect will eventually kill almost all of our ash trees. So, we as a town have to figure out what we're going to do to prepare ourselves for this eventuality, and we have a plan. I've been asked occasionally where the EAB is. It's not in Charlotte right now. The state is monitoring the spread of the Emerald Ash Bore, and these circles represent infestation zones. So, the central, center of the red circle are identified areas where EAB has broken out. And if you look at the, this map, you can see the bottom circle is our closest infestation. That's in Bristol. And our town, the extreme southeast corner of our town is right at the edge of the infestation zone, so we're getting close to that. The, we're asking people's help to identify the thing. I'd like to know when it's here. So what you're looking for is a half-inch-long, green, bullet-shaped beetle. The characteristic are these D-shaped exit holes, but they're very hard to see, so, next slide. The way the thing has been mostly identified is through, what's it called, bark flecking or sometimes blonding, it's called. And what happens is that woodpeckers detect the movement of the insect larvae under the bark and start pecking at the bark, and it leaves this characteristic appearance of sort of blonding or flecking of the bark. So that's the way the thing has mostly been identified to date. The, there are different options. The only way to keep your ash trees is to chemically treat them. This is a picture of somebody doing that chemical treatment. It costs about $200 or $300 per tree to treat it, has to be repeated every two or three On treatment, so, to go back to the treatment idea, the treatment is really our first, the first thing we like to do for at least a handful of trees around town. We want our children and our grandchildren to know what ash trees look like. So, we've identified seven keeper trees, three at the park, three at the beach, and one behind the senior center. So, we're going to chemically treat those, they'll require treatment every two or three years or so, and we're going to pay for that and keep at least those trees. Another thing is that we're asking people to identify other keeper trees. So, good candidate keeper trees would be relatively large trees, like larger than 10 inches, healthy trees. And if you have a tree that you think is a keeper tree in the town right-of-way or noticed one on town property, let me know, and we'll consider that as a candidate for future chemical treatments. The other thing is we're encouraging private landowners to treat the trees on their own property is another option, and several people have already done that. The champion white ash in Charlotte has been already treated and will be preserved. So, the other main dimension of our town response to the EAB challenge is removal. So, this means preemptive removal of currently healthy trees, which is a little bit of a hard thing to get your head around, but the motivation for doing this are really two. First, public safety, because eventually we're going to have to deal with the problem of having an estimated 2,000 trees in our public right-of-ways falling into the road if we do nothing. So, we want to make sure that our roads are safe, that travel isn't impeded particularly for emergency vehicles, and that trees aren't falling on cars and property and people. So that's our first consideration. The second consideration is cost. It's estimated to, we now have an inventory or a complete census of all our ash trees in town, and I, we have some preliminary estimates from professional tree companies. We estimate that it's going to cost about $100,000 to take care of the removal of ash trees. That's spaced over a period of five years. If we do nothing, or if we do too little, it's going to end up costing us more. Removal of dead ash trees costs about 50% more than removal of live ash trees. They're dangerous and tricky to take down. Also, if we wait till EAB really takes hold, we're going to be competing with a lot of other towns and landowners for the time of arborist and tree companies, and the price of tree removal is going to go up for that period of time while people are dealing with And then, the final thing is, of course, we just want, we want to spread the cost out. We don't want the cost of the tree removals to be taking place over a short period of So, another thing that we're doing is we're trying to support the state's slow the spread program, and the chief element of that is to discourage movement of wood from identified infestation areas. So, we're asking people to cooperate with that. This is our, with the help of a grant and two UVM interns, we've been able to do a complete census of ash trees. This is a map of the ash trees in the town right-of-way. It excludes things that are outside of the right-of-way. The, the map is color-coded so that the yellow dots represent the trees that are 24 inches or greater in diameter. Blue dots are the trees that are 12 to 24 inches, and green dots are 6 to 12 inches. The trees that are going to be most problematic for us are the larger ones, so we're focusing on removal of trees, the yellow and the blue dots here. And if you look at the map, it's interesting, you can see how the spread is, the distribution of ash trees is mostly on the western part of town, and there are certain areas of town that have very high concentrations of ash trees, like Converse Bay Road and Cedar Beach area, Thompson's Point. Those are areas that are particularly problematic for us to have to eventually deal with. The, our current plan, we have some money from the town. We've got $20,000 this year from the town to do preemptive removals. We're focusing on, first, on roads where, that are heavily trafficked, which have high concentrations of relatively large diameter trees. And for the next project, we're going to be working on sections of Ferry Road and Greenbush Road. Those trees are marked, so if you want to drive through, you can see the trees that we've identified for removal. I welcome questions or comments or suggestions. I'm available at my office. This is my office number. Please feel free to call me there. I'm also available via email if you care to write to me. And I don't know, Charlie, if we have any time for questions?
Questions, guys?
Yeah, questions? Yeah.
Is that map available online when you showed of the distribution of trees in the city?
It's not yet, but well, I'll put it online. There's a, there are a lot of, there are some resources on the town website. There's a tree warden section, and there's a lot of information there, links about the Emerald Ash Bore. I'll put a, I'll put that on the town map, the town website. Judy.
This is a reminder, make sure you have a microphone before you speak with questions.
Is there a plan to replant trees, replace the trees that are being cut down?
Yeah, thanks. That's a really good question. So, the question was, is there a plan to replace the trees that have been cut down? And mostly, we're going to be relying on natural regeneration. Charlotte is still primarily a rural town, and trees volunteer on the roadside, so we're going to be taking advantage of natural regeneration and trying to suppress invasive species like buckthorn and honeysuckle that are likely to come out when we remove the ash trees. We have a small amount of money in the town rudder fund. This is a fund that was put together with donations from people from the town, so we're going to use some of that money for the first round of chemical treatments, and some of that money will be available for replanting. But another way to support the town and contribute to the addressing this problem would be to, you know, make donations to that, tax deductible donations to the rudder fund. Mike? Hi. Mark, is there a possibility of selling some of the lumber when you cut down a tree so that you can get some funds for further action? Yeah, that's a really good question, Mike. So, and somebody just asked me this as well. The question is, can we recover some of the costs of doing these tree removals by selling the timber? And it's something that, it's a little bit problematic, possibly is the answer, maybe is the answer. It's a little bit problematic. Roadside trees are not so attractive to mills because they tend to branch out and they often have nails in them. But, that said, there may be some opportunity to buck the trees up and sell logs to mills. And I'm going to take a look at the current sales area to see if there are any possible millable trees, and we'll consider that in the future. But I don't, I don't have a lot of hope that that's going to help us that much, but it could help a little bit. If there, I think, what's the status of the Lake Road cleanup?
Would you like to know the status of the Lake Road cleanup of ash trees?
Yeah, okay. So, what's the status of the Lake Road project? Last year, as you know, we, we had a kind of a trial project to remove trees on Lake Road, and that's been completed. We removed close to 200 trees, so that, the section of Lake Road from Ferry Road to Thompson's Point Road has been taken care of. If there are any more questions, I'm available. Give me a call, send me an email. Thanks. I appreciate your support, too.
Are there any questions about Article One? Do you have any detailed questions about, to ask what Mike and Ashley laid out a presentation and you put out for answers to those questions?
Wait, yeah, wait for the microphone.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me? My name is Jonathan Silverman, and I'm the chair of the Board of Trustees at the library. And on behalf of the Board of Trustees, our infamous library staff, the Friends of the Library Campaign, and Building Committees, we would like to thank the Charlotte community for all of their wonderful support for the addition of our library and generous contributions. There's still opportunities for more contributions as we're just slightly, slightly short, but we would certainly welcome them. I also, on behalf of all of, everybody at the library and really the community, I'd like to acknowledge and thank one member of our community who devoted a tremendous amount of time for our addition, and that's Fritz Tegates. And he contributed his vision, tremendous amount of dedication, meticulous caring for the construction process, and of course, his very dry humor. So, on behalf of the community, I think we should thank Fritz for this. And as you may know, that the library is reopened with our new addition, and we are having a grand opening on Sunday, May 3rd, which everyone is invited to come and participate. And of course, you can come anytime. You don't have to wait until then because we have certainly programs for everyone. So again, thank you to the community for supporting our well-needed addition to the library. Thank you.
Sorry, sir, you already moved. Charlie, may I respectfully request that you ask the folks who are handling the voting and waiting in line to vote in the back to keep the conversation down to a hush because it's getting difficult to hear what's going on over the conversation back here. Thank you.
Very good point. I am conscious of that. It's hard when a lot, the line's really full, but that's a good point. It's quieter now because people aren't going through.
Can I just say something about that? We need to ask people questions, so we have to ask them, so we have to have limited votes. Yeah, I know. We also have to hear, we have to hear them also at the same time, so.
Any other questions on Article One? So, are we ready for a vote on that? So, it's, the article is to hear the reports of the town officers and to act upon the same. All those in the favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, the motion passed. Article Two, will the, voters of the town vote pursuant to 32 VSA Section 4773 to have property taxes payable on or before November 18th, 2020, and have payments made to the town treasurer as receiver of taxes? Do I hear a motion to move, somebody want to move that? Lane Morrison, second. Lorna Jimmerson. Okay, is there any discussion? This is where we usually discuss whether we want to do them quarterly or it can be paid early or not, and they can be paid early? Ah, Mike.
My familial, I'm Mike Russell. My familial obligation to point out that it's the 16th of November, not the 18th.
You're right. I'm, with my glasses, it was the 18th, but you're right. Any other points? Steve.
Hi, I'm Stephen Kirin, second time in 27 years speaking at town meetings. I'm looking at page 46 in the town report, which has the delinquent taxes. And for 25 of the town meetings that I've come to, the name of the person who hasn't paid their taxes is there. And we switched last year to the parcel ID number, and so that year and this year, we've had parcel ID. I'm on page 46. And I don't know who 000032514 is. And I think that, it's not that I want to shame somebody by putting unpaid taxes on, but if, for example, the person 00610821 is a member of the Select Board, I'd want to know.
So, hold on a minute. So, I'm inclined to rule you, your question not germane to this article, although I would ask for unanimous consent to discuss that aspect of this article. It should have been brought up during Article One, but if the body's okay with discussing that somewhat related point, hearing no objection, are there any objections to discussing delinquent tax list in the, right now? No, no objections, or you?
No.
Okay, so go ahead, Steve.
Well, just, we have $123,000 in delinquent taxes, and I think it would matter to know who the people are that are paying them. And I don't know why it changed. It had always been the name of the individual, and I feel like there's a, there's a little bit of accountability. Maybe I just want to make a request, a motion, I guess is what I need. There, in the future, we have the name of the property owner who is delinquent.
So, that motion probably be relevant at Article Eight when we can transact other business. It wouldn't be a binding motion, but it would be advice to the Select Board or the town treasurer or clerk.
It may not even be necessary to make a motion, just seems to me to be common sense.
Right, thank you. Anything else on Article Two?
Excuse me. Excuse me, Rick. I'm not sure we answered his question. His question was, why did it change?
Right.
And we've gone around so we can move it later, but the question is, why did it change in the first place?
So, I think the preparer of the town report or the town delinquent tax collector, somebody could answer that. Do you want to answer it, Mary? You got a microphone in the back of the room, please? You got a microphone in the back of the room, please?
So I just made a judgment call, and I think I did it last year by the parcel number. The delinquent tax list is certainly public, and if you have an interest in it and you see your Town Report and you are looking at the list and you want to know who makes up the list, you're certainly welcome to either come to our office or call and see who that is or the address or anything you want to know. But it's just a judgment. I didn't really feel like I had to put people's names in.
Anything else on Article 2? Ready for a vote? Okay, so Article 2 is, will the voters of the town vote pursuant to 32 VSA 4773 to have property taxes payable on or before November 16th, 2020, and to have payments made to the town treasurer as receiver of taxes? All those in favor of the article, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, Article 2 passes. Okay, Article 3. Will the voters of the town approve the Select Board's budget of $3,423,165 for the fiscal year July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, in addition to those monies raised pursuant to Article 4 and Article 5, if any, of which an anticipated sum of $1,963,357 will be raised by property taxes and an anticipated sum of $1,459,808 will be raised by non-tax revenues, which approval shall not become effective until the voters approve such budget by Australian ballot vote in accordance with the requirements of the Charter of the Town of Charlotte. Is there a move to, a motion for Article 3? Matt Krasnow moved that? Is there a second? Second, Tina Flood? Okay, so as the, I got fancy with Robert's rules this year, and as the mover of the article, Matt gets to speak first on it, and he has 10 minutes to speak.
I just want to welcome everyone. Thank you for coming to Town Meeting. It looks like we have a good turnout this year. We basically followed the same process for developing the budget as we've done the last five years I've been on the board. We had a meeting in the fall with all of the committees who would be sending budget requests. Is that working? Sending budget requests in and asked them to think about a zero-based budgeting system, think about what they wanted to accomplish during the year, guess how much that would cost in dollars, and then put that in as the request. When all of those requests came in in mid-December, we added all of that up and saw that there was a significant increase over last year's proposed Select Board's budget. So we then sharpened our pencils over the next six weeks, asked committees to come back in and talk about what they could possibly do without, if possible, and we were shooting for as small of an increase in the budget as possible without sacrificing things that are of value to the town or necessary for town operations. Through that process, we were able to shave about $188,000 from the initial kind of wish list, and two decisions were made also to pull out from the Select Board's budget items to be discussed as separate articles here at Town Meeting to see what the town wanted to do with these two articles. They can, I can't really discuss them now, but if you look in the Town Report, we can, we'll have time to discuss them specifically as the next two articles in the meeting here. One thing that came up was you'll see in the donations category that was taken out of the Select Board's budget this year. From what I understand, originally it was out of the budget. It had been rolled into the budget for a while, and these are charitable donations to nonprofits that generally have direct services in town. So that is a separate article this year on Town Meeting for everyone here to decide on, independent of the town's budget. The other is every year, the Select Board puts in a certain amount of money into the Trails Reserve Fund, and due to an increase in interest and a large necessary expenditure to build out the trail network, the Select Board thought it would be important to have that as a discussion item, independent of the budget, on the floor. So that is a separate article. But that was another way of reducing the budget requests and also having the community decide that value judgment and what number people would like to see that be as far as a yearly investment. Going through the budget itself, what we ended up doing is just looking at the largest deltas. So on the revenue side, starting on page 13, you'll see Thompson's Point Rent is expected to go up significantly, about 3.4%. I think the biggest accomplishment this year financially would be the interest income on page 14. Budgeted for last year was $350, and year-to-date, we're at $15,274. That's a little over a 4,100% increase. And that was really Mary's work with Peter Trono and Tom Kozinuk, who really looked into having the general fund money earning interest in the bank account as it's being spent over the year. So that's generated quite a bit of money, and it's something that will continue. So it looks like revenues overall are up about 11%. Going to the expenses side, starting on page 15, looking at percentage by department. This year, there was a request from the town clerk to increase a part-time employee, partially because of a possible change in employees, that transition that might be happening, and to allow time for training so that there's not a gap in institutional knowledge and service. So that budget is up 16.3%. Recreation total, looks like it's up in double digits percentage, but if you look at the revenue, it turns out to be about a 6.3% increase. There's a little adjustment in how the town's recording the recreation numbers because of a change in how the district is now charging, came up with a new fee schedule for charging the town to use the school grounds. And then on page 19, probably the most significant change to the budget is the Charlotte Volunteer Fire and Rescue Service has a 12.7% increase. This is largely due to changing their employment structure to keep retention of employees from per diem to part-time and full-time employees. And that's something that was presented as a necessary way of keeping paramedic-level employees in service. So overall, the tax rate without Articles, if you look on page 20, about midway through that table, we're at about a 4.1% increase this year with the budget. And if Article 4 and Article 5 are passed as well, the town would be looking at an 8.1% increase. So it seemed like a significant enough increase that the Select Board wanted to have the town weigh in on those specifically. I guess this is a good time for questions?
Okay. Any questions on the budget? Jim Donovan in the back, and then?
Charlie? People can state their names, too. Yep. Thank you. Jim Donovan. Part of the revenue seems to be based on an assumption that we'll be getting more development in terms of revenues for recording fees and various other things. Could you just talk as to why you put those into the budget and what, how are you justifying those?
Which, which one specifically, Jim?
There's a $20,000 increase in recording fees. There is a septic application, $8,500 increase, and there's a few others, if I recall, like that, that basically mean there'll be more development or something happening in town. I'm just wondering what's the reasoning behind that? Not that I'm totally questioning it, just want to understand why it's there.
So it looks like Mary has an answer, maybe for the recording fees, right there in the back? Thank you.
So last year, at the time we were budgeting, the state had not come through with increases in fees for clerk's offices for recording, and now that is, that came into play in July of 2019. So our fees, for example, instead of $10 a page for recording, are now $15 a page for recording, $25 for milars versus 15, which makes our revenues estimate jump from 40 to 60, and it really has nothing to do with development.
I can speak to the septic application under planning and zoning of the revenue. That's the $8,500 change. If you look historically, it was a level-funded number at 55.
Wait a minute here, Matt, we've got a bird chirping here. Thank you.
Go ahead. So you look, it was traditionally just level-funded estimate at 8,500, and that was really a static estimate. We looked at what the actual revenues were. You can see it was $14,250 in 1819, and year-to-date, as of January, about halfway through the fiscal year, we were at $7,700. So it seemed like a responsible guess to budget $14,000 for next year, just based on the actuals.
Go ahead, right there.
Hi, Evan Webster. I had a question about the top line of the budget here, the revenue budget, which says municipal tax revenue. And just the year-to-date, 1920, it says like $3,500,000 or so, and it just seems really high compared to the previous year. It's like double, and it also like doesn't, isn't reflected by the budget. So I was just trying to understand that better.
That is an accounting issue, Mary. Would you like to speak to that?
So that line is that high because we pay the state education funds in December and June, and so we have not paid that June payment, which is handily over $2 million. So that's why that is the way it is. Pardon? Because the state money comes in and goes out, and it really has nothing to do with our budget, it comes in tax revenue and is paid out of that line. It's just an in and out.
The benefit now that we're earning a modest interest on the money that is in the general fund checking account is that money not paid to the state that you see year-to-date is accruing interest before we, in the time that we're holding on to it.
Other questions? Oh, actually, it's right over here on the side to start with.
Peter Knobes. On page 19 under miscellaneous, why do we pay?
Can you have the name, please?
Peter Knobes.
Thanks.
On miscellaneous expenses on 19, page 19, why do we pay flea market electricity when there's, I don't think there's a flea market? And the second question is, what's the difference in canine control officer and then the next line, dogs miscellaneous? And the third quickie, I hope, is traffic enforcement? Where, that's the Vermont State Police for patrolling, I believe. We're going to give them budgeted $5,000 less? My question is, are these discussions with Heinsberg and police going to affect anything, or can you talk about that? Or is this the wrong time to ask that?
Yeah, Dean, flea market? That's the, that's the light.
That's the pump for the well. It pumps to the whole lantern, probably.
Correct. There is a well on the flea market property that the town owns. The town has access to the well, although it doesn't use it, but the cost of operating the pump is, that's what that cost is. And there may also be an electric light in that, on that parcel at that, in that location.
So I will retroactively ask for permission to allow a non-voter to speak at Town Meeting. Dean is not a resident or voter of Charlotte, so with unanimous consent, unless there's an objection, we're going to let him speak to questions. Thank you.
So the dog miscellaneous, I was just verifying, is the annual contract with Comfort Hill, which when there are dogs that are impounded temporarily, they go to Comfort Hill. So that's a standing contract where they reserve room for the town. And the traffic enforcement, again, was an attempt to make a modest adjustment to the actuals of what the state police have been providing. It was always an up to number, and they have been providing a good amount of service, but we didn't want to chronically be putting in more than that. Also, there is, in the revenue side, an associated revenue that we've been also correcting downward to what the actual recovery from fines is for the town.
Right here in the middle, center section.
Thank you. Wilker Schneider, I just seek some clarification. I noticed one of the Select Board members did not sign for the budget. Does that mean she objected to the budget?
No, it was me. I had really nasty dental surgery, and I had to leave the Select Board meeting, and I apologize for that, but that's what happened.
I'm sorry to hear about that.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine, but. They didn't, they basically kicked me out because I was in so much pain and getting really cranky.
In the back on the left.
Thank you, Mike Yantoschka. Pages 17 and 18, I noticed that the donations were zeroed out, and I was wondering what the rationale behind that was.
So that's Article 5, although maybe you just want to speak to the rationale. Yeah, go ahead. Speak to the rationale.
So I was going to, at the beginning of Article 5, talk about why, more in depth, why the Select Board decided to pull that article out. It is? Okay.
Talk about the rationale, not the meat of it, I think.
Okay, so the rationale from the majority of the board this year was to have the community make a decision about which nonprofits, if any, the town would like the town to be donating money to rather than individuals donating money to. And I think originally, this was done on the floor of Town Meeting. From what I understand, the committee was put together, and then at some point, it was rolled into the general fund budget. And this year, there were enough people on the board who wanted to have that discussion at Town Meeting. It's been 10 or 15 years, and to just discuss the value of making donations to charitable nonprofits from behalf of the town, and to have that discussion on the floor.
Other questions? Right here. Dean? Yeah, right there in the center section. Oh, wait for the mic there, Dean.
Morning, Dean Leary. Morning, Dean Leary. About the nonprofits, page 19, Charlotte Land Trust, why are they not with the other nonprofits and still included in the town budget?
Is this a change from last year, you're saying?
No. Charlotte Land Trust, no one, no one on the land trust is appointed or elected by the town. It's just a nonprofit.
We've got a microphone.
Why was that segregated out from the other nonprofits and kept in the regular life?
That's a good thing, and if there's a will on the floor to change that, that's certainly a motion that could be made.
Do I understand correctly, though, if, we cannot add to an article, we cannot add expenses to an article?
You can, you can, you know, you certainly can add expenses to an article. So what we're voting on, to be clear, is the bottom-line number for this budget. And the town has historically adjusted items, line items up and down, or added, actually. And to go to your point about the land trust, that was, that may have been moved on the floor. There have been line items created at town meeting. This is a little more complicated because the rest of the donations went to a different article. But you could be creative on how you wanted to approach that with that.
I would move that we move the $5,000 budget for the Charlotte Land Trust from Article 1 to Article 2, Article 5, is it, with the other nonprofits?
That's going to get tricky. I'm trying to think through how to make this. So one of the requirements is to make sure that what we're voting on here is, as it is warned for the, for everybody who didn't necessarily show up, not that we're supposed to have sympathy for them, but they, we have to make sure that we don't make a change such that it wasn't, what we're doing is not warned, was not warned. So I think moving it by a motion now to there is not what was warned.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Point of order, would it, would it be possible to have two separate motions? One, to remove $5,000 from Article 3, and when Article 5 is taken up, a motion to add $5,000?
I wasn't going to suggest that, but I think that's one logical way to do it, yes.
I withdraw my motion, move to remove $5,000 for Charlotte Land Trust from Article 1. Three? Three.
Is there a second? Rick Long, second in. So a motion was made by Dean Leary. All right, so we have an amendment to the budget on the table here, or I don't know if it's on the table, but it's, we're discussing it. So discussion now is, is, needs to be germane to that motion to zero out the $5,000 for the Charlotte Land Trust. Is there any discussion of that? Yes? Yes?
I was hoping we could have more of a discussion before motions get made. There's a lot of thinking and concern about this topic, the donations, and maybe the land trust too, but, I mean, we have more questions to ask you before maybe motions are entertained.
So I, the, the way it works is if somebody gets the floor, and they can do whatever they want, and that's what he's done. So I appreciate the point, but this is, this is the body working as a, as a whole, and my job is to recognize people and make sure what they do is within the germaneness and rules Robert put out there. Not that we're all going to blame it all on Bunny, but that's, that's what, so it's, his motion is germane. Lane?
Lane Morrison. Could somebody from the land trust explain what that money goes toward? I mean, that might help clarify things.
So we have somebody from the land trust who wants to speak to it. Here's Kate on the west end of the room.
Hi, Kate Lampton. I'm on the board of the Charlotte Land Trust. Going back to the original question, why that money is shown this way, it predates, I think, all of us that are on the board now. I saw Valerie raise her hand a minute or two ago. She may have more of a historical perspective on how that began, but it's been that way ever since I was, have been on the board, which has been longer than I even want to contemplate. So where does the money go? First of all, it's sort of a use-it-or-lose-it money. In other words, if we don't spend it, we, it's, it's not a $5,000 that goes to us every year regardless of our expenses. So you'll see over the course of years that in the actual, it'll vary. I think, I'm pretty sure last year we did spend the $5,000. So where does it go? It goes for a lot of expenses that are associated with projects. Sometimes we are able to help a landowner with the cost of appraisal, which goes a long way towards making a project viable, and the money partially can help with that. We do a lot of different assessments to decide if a project is indeed worthy of the effort and the money it takes to conserve it. And those include things like an ECO assessment, to look thoroughly at what is on the property, what are its, its values are, how it relates both locally and regionally. We do use it for some administrative fees that are, that are very important to our work. We have a easement defense insurance that is now recommended for well-run land trusts across the country. It's a very special insurance product that protects against easement defense. Part of that premium is supported by that fund. We, after, every project is finished, there's a very complex document called a baseline documentation report, BDR, that is completed, and it's just what it is, it says. It's the baseline of what the property is, what its state is at that given moment. That goes in the records because we have to steward these easements in perpetuity. And so having a very good, solid base of information that we can assess properties to make sure easements are not being violated, and so it helps with that. Those are, those are the major things. Sometimes there is a special event or something that is of town-wide importance that we, we put on, a little bit of the money might go towards that as well. So a hodgepodge of things. We base it really on what is of most use to the town relative to what we're doing.
Tina, right here.
Tina Flood. I date myself, I do remember when this was first initially proposed and approved by the town. Dates back to the late '80s, and it was when the Charlotte Land Trust was being formed. It was a commitment by the town to the concept of preserving our land as open space. And as a body, we have approved it year after year. I'm not sure that it was necessarily conscious every year, but it definitely has been consistent with the town's commitment to open space.
Peter, right in the middle.
Hi, Peter Jocelyn. This is a process question, I think, which is if there's a vote to change Article 5, Article 5 is voted on by Australian ballot, correct?
No.
No?
No. Article 5 will be on the floor.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else related to the amendment to take $5,000? Jenny Cole. Coming to you. Right there. Go southeast, right there. Maybe if we stand up so that the microphone people, I was calling Jenny Cole.
Mr. Moderator?
Okay, yes.
I would like to point out that Article 5 is by Australian ballot on page 12.
That's for April 7, no, it's on page 7. It's Article 5 is...
This is the last year of the charter, so whatever's approved at town meeting day will then be Australian ballot in April.
Right, right. So Jenny, do you have your microphone yet? Did you want to speak? Or was that the point?
Actually, I think my question would come a little bit later, but I wanted to ask about special investigations that...
Yeah, this is going to be about the amendment to on $5,000. Okay. So... Did you just try to call the question? What's that? So, okay, Lane has just demonstrated one of the violations that's classic at town of Charlotte, town meeting. So stand up, Lane, and, okay. So Martha Perkins is not here to abuse, so in order to call the question, you have to be recognized by the moderator first. You can't shout it out. You can shout out point of order, or point of information, or if the projector goes on fire because Dean put the notebook in front of the lens, then you can say shout out, but you cannot call the question. You can go sit down there, Lane, thank you. So the other thing is that I'm going to make sure everybody else speaks before somebody speaks twice on a motion, so new hands are what I'm looking for, Peter, so you can wait and talk in a minute. So Mike Yantoschka, and then back here behind, over here, so... So go ahead and stand for the mic, or you're all set. Okay.
Okay, so Mike Yantoschka, and my comment is that this seems to be more of a town function as opposed to a nonprofit organization thing, and I would recommend keeping it in the town budget as opposed to Article 5, because Article 5 has no specificity as to how much money is going where. So if we just increased the amount from $17,000 to $23,000, $22,000 something, it, there's no way to say the $5,000 should be going to the Charlotte Land Trust. So, just my comment. I would vote against this, but...
So I've got a hand over here.
Linda Hamilton. I would just speak in favor of keeping the land trust allocation where it is, because it's intimately tied to our commitment to the conservation fund. It's through the land trust that we are mostly able to use the money that we put into the conservation fund. So it is a functioning part of government, basically.
Okay. Matt?
Matt Zucker. To Mike's point, I mean, if this is, my question would be if this is going to be accepted as a town function, and there are no town officials providing any governance, what would be the governance structure to operate this as a town function as opposed to a nonprofit?
Do you want to speak to that, Matt? So, okay, yeah. Kate, want to answer the question? Sure.
So I do want to be very clear, we are a private, nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization. So in, as part of your discussion, keep in mind that we are not a town entity. The town has a very long history of support and, and participation in conservation through both this and also our conservation fund. What does differentiate this money from the money that it goes to other nonprofits is, as I said earlier, we are not given $5,000 that we then walk away and do whatever we do. We submit, we submit bills for the items I, I mentioned earlier. Not all of those, not every year, but we do submit them to the town clerk. We, I am assuming then, if there was a submission that we made with, for the money, that was deemed to be inappropriate, they wouldn't give us the money. So that's the difference between this money and the other nonprofit donations. This one is on a case-by-case submission of an invoice for reimbursement, and if at the end of the year we have not submitted $5,000 worth, we don't get $5,000. The other, as I understand it, the other donations are, go directly to the nonprofits, but we are a completely separate 501(c)(3) private nonprofit.
Kate, can you speak to how it relates to the conservation fund?
So this does not relate to the conservation fund. The town, for 20-some-odd-plus years, has had a fund where money is put in yearly. For a number of years, it was two cents on the tax dollar that went in every year. Several years ago, we changed that to be a specific number, and we do not put money in every year. Every year, the Charlotte Land Trust, under the terms of the conservation fund setup, we go to the select board with a list of potential projects for the coming fiscal year, and we have a potential number associated with it that we might make application to the conservation fund. So you'll see in the budget, this year, there is no money that's going into the conservation fund, because the fund level is, we believe, sufficient relative to the potential projects that are out there. So the conservation fund and the Charlotte Land Trust money in the budget are completely separate, although, I mean, obviously, they're related in that they both go towards conservation. The conservation fund money goes directly to the purchase of conservation easements. The donation we receive does not.
So Peter, Peter Jocelyn? Right here in the center section. If you want to stand up so the microphone people can see you, that'd be helpful.
So if, Peter Jocelyn, again, go back to a process question, which is this art by Australian ballot, correct?
No, it's the budget articles, floor of articles here get voted on again by Australian ballot because of the charter five weeks from now. That's why, this is a floor vote, just like the budget.
Okay, but isn't Article 5 specific to the contributions that the town makes? And I thought that was going to be Australian ballot, or am I missing something?
Yeah, I think the, it's, the technical issue is, is it Australian ballot today? So it's a floor vote today, and that's what allows the number to be changed today. And then it'll be an Australian ballot five weeks from now, and it won't be able to be changed on the day of the Australian ballot.
So it's tied to the budget?
Yeah, correct.
The charter speaks to budget and budget-related articles.
Okay, thank you.
That if voted on, it could be modified here and then voted on, affirmed by Australian ballot in five weeks.
If you look on page 12, you'll see blanks, and that's, those indicate any changes made on the floor today.
Okay. Mary? Wait for the microphone, please.
Simply, Charlotte Land Trust is part of our budget, and it's an expense line in our budget. It is administrative costs, et cetera, which I receive invoices for. They come to the select board, and they give us a ballpark figure of $5,000. It is not part of donations, it's not part of the separate article, it never has been part of donations, and it is an expense that the town considers as part of our whole budget. So this is where we would amend it if we wanted to, up or down, and has nothing to do with the other article. and has nothing to do with the other article.
Jesse? Yes, you are.
I call the question, please.
All right. All right. There's been a move to call the question. Is there a second? All right, this requires a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of ceasing debate on the amendment to take $5,000 out of the Article 3 Select Board budget, please stand.
Ceasing debate? It's just a cease debate?
All those opposed to ceasing debate, stand. Okay, the ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. The motion to cease debate passes. We're now voting, going directly to a vote on the amendment to reduce the line item for Charlotte Land Trust of $5,000, although technically, I suppose, we're amending the bottom-line number of the article from $3,423,165 to that number, $4,418,165. Is everybody comfortable with that motion? Yeah. Probably not. Where's Jerry when you need him? Okay. So the spirit of it was to reduce $5,000. So I was supposed to have restated the article minutes ago to change that bottom-line number. It's now going to be $3,418,165 is the budget for the Select Board.
And the tax revenue, the second number would change?
Why would the revenue change?
Anticipated sum will be raised by property taxes would get reduced?
Yeah, okay, so...
$1,958,357?
That's right. All right, so a vote on... All those in favor of the vote to change the article as described signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The noes appear to have it. The noes do have it. The amendment fails. Okay, now we're back to Article 3. As written on page 7. Any other questions about the article? Wally Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Walter Gates. I live on Ferry Road. I wish to make an amendment. I move that the budget be increased by $10,000, specifically to increase the amount for ash tree removal from $10,000 to $20,000.
Is there a second? Second? Sue Smith. Okay, so the effect of that is going to be to increase the budget to $3,433,165. And the anticipated sum of $1,973,357 raised by property taxes.
I trust your arithmetic.
Okay. So you get to speak for the first of this. Wally, you have 10 minutes.
Yes. I don't need 10 minutes. Mr. Dillenbach, I think, put the case forward. As you know, the ash tree bore is coming. It can't be stopped. The trees are going to die. If we leave them, they are dangerous. So we have a good program to remove most of the trees. $10,000 for one year is not enough. Now, I'm not a tree man, but I have one piece of experience which most of you do not have. In January of this year, I had over 40 ash trees removed from my own property. Some of these were dangerous to life and property. There were some that were within 10 feet of my garage and 25 feet of my house. And some would endanger the power line. So I stepped forward now. And the reasons I stepped forward are the same reasons that we should increase the budget this year. And Mr. Dillenbach stated them. I'm going to repeat them. There are two reasons that if we don't budget enough money early on, we're going to pay more later, and could be a lot more. I'm also going to tell you that if you were to extrapolate what I paid for trees, it would be more like $200,000 for the total. Now, we don't know what that number's going to be. But it's going to be a big number. It's coming. The two reasons are, first of all, dead trees are more expensive as well as being dangerous. You don't want to go up to a dead ash tree and stoop down and cut it at the bottom with your chainsaw. You may get killed. They have to be taken down from the top typically, and this means a bucket truck. The second thing is, there's going to be competition coming. It's not only Charlotte having to hire people to cut down ash trees, other communities, and homeowners like me. And it's going to get more expensive. It's inevitable if we don't do it early on. Thank you.
Okay. Who else wants to speak on this amendment? So the points have to be related to the amendment to increase the Select Board budget by $10,000 to increase the ash tree removal line item from $10,000 to $20,000. Seeing no hands.
Charlie?
Yes.
I would just like to add that the original plan, when the presentation came two years ago to the Select Board, was to allocate $20,000 over a five-year period. The Select Board found $10,000 in that fiscal year to get the ball rolling even sooner than the budget process allowed and the budget approval process allowed. This year, there is $20,000 allocated that was approved at Town Meeting last year. And I would support maintaining that five-year plan that was presented and agreed upon two years ago.
What's that? Okay. Tina?
Tina Flood. I do remember that conversation last year. And as I look on page 19, under ash tree removal, there are no previous allocated funds.
It's in the Town Highway Budget.
So it was wrapped into the Town Highway Budget. You'll see it's $20,000 less this year from last year.
Page 16.
If you described that earlier, I wasn't there. I apologize.
Okay, sorry. And just because it was going to be a consistent line item, it was created this year, so that people could follow that.
No other questions? Dean? I think Linda seconded it. Sue Smith seconded it, right? Right. Yes. Well, do you have it as a second or not? I remember Sue Smith seconding something. What did she say? Okay. Yeah, it was Sue Smith seconded it.
I just... I meant to add that $10,000 was taken out at the last Select Board meeting when we were really looking to keep that budget number presentation as low as possible. And that was one of the last reductions to the Select Board budget.
Well, what was the previous motion? The dean's motion? She definitely didn't second that. Right, right. Yeah, so there was a clear second. Yep. Okay. Anything else on the amendment? Ready for a vote? Okay, the vote is going to be amending the Select Board budget by $10,000 to a total of $3,433,165 with taxes to increase to $1,973,357 with the intent to increase the line item on page 19 of ash tree removal. You have a point of order? Well... Yeah, you gotta wait for a microphone.
Might be a little late, but I was hoping maybe Mark could talk about his opinion on this motion since he's our expert.
Okay.
Thanks. I've been thinking about this issue, the Emerald Ash Bore issue, for quite a long time. And I've been talking to people from around the state and throughout the country about this, what's going on. And one recent conversation really sticks in my mind. That was, I spoke to Jared Wilcox, who's the Chief Arborist for Green Mountain Power. And he participates every year in a discussion among his counterparts in the northeast quadrant of the country, Midwest. And one of the things that his counterparts have told him is that they really wish they had started earlier with a preemptive removal of ash trees in their areas. It's a really rough thing to be caught wrong-footed on this issue. But if we spend the money now and are well-prepared, I think we'll get through it all right. So of course, I support the motion.
So I'm remiss. Could you identify yourself, please? Okay, thank you. All right. Any other discussion? All right. So we're gonna... Ready for a vote to amend the Select Board budget to add $10,000 for Emerald Ash Tree Removal, page 19. So the total, new total for the budget will be $3,433,165. And the additional property tax revenue will increase to $1,973,357. All those in favor, the motions signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. The motion carries. All right, we're back to the original article now. As... Actually, the original article increased by $10,000. So any other discussion? Marty?
Marty Illick. So I heard from the Select Board that the reasoning for putting $18,000 or so from donations outside of the general fund to be a separate article for us to vote on. And when you explained that, you said that the majority of the Select Board, I presume, wants this to be a discussion on the floor. That presumes that people know what the Select Board knows, where we all went into the Select Board and made our reports, answered questions, and discussed. So the depth of knowledge on the Select Board is far greater than what's on this floor, no offense. And that... Because that's the way we've designed it. So to come in with a budget with the donations as a separate article, I think, is premature. It might be the way we go, but I feel like the process has been... It's not quite ideal. And I would suggest that in... Right now, we put the donation money back into the general fund and work our way toward possibly an article by having a discussion with the taxpayers as to whether or not this should happen. But right now, I don't think people have the depth of knowledge to know, say whether I'm the director of Lewis Creek Association. I asked for a small amount of money. We've been doing this since 1990. So we've been regularly asking for money. This is a public-private partnership that's longstanding, just like the land trust. You know, slightly different, but there's no reason to do this annually where you have numbers of public-private partnerships, just like Vermont, all over the... In all the 200 towns in the state, we do this. So, you know, a town like Charlotte cannot afford to have social services. We're too small. So we have a public-private partnership. This is the way we do business in Vermont. I don't see this as putting nonprofits that do social services over in another category. It's part of our annual expenses. We provide for the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. That's our... That's the Select Board's responsibility. So I feel like we should put that money back in, have the Select Board maybe do some outreach and education about what all these organizations are so people can start to gain some depth of knowledge before they just, I'm going to say willy-nilly, vote it up or down. We're not ready to do that in the way that you've organized the budget. So I would like to propose that whatever that number is be added back into the general fund.
So this sounds like a... Is this... You're looking to amend the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
And I guess that was my long-winded explanation. But I'd like to bring that money back into the general fund. We can take anything out any time on the floor here at Town Meeting. So we already have that luxury. We've talked about this frequently over the years. There's no reason why we can't... But I don't think people have the depth of knowledge now for this. I don't know. There's like 20 lines here. That's a lot of knowledge that you're expecting us to have, and we were not prepared for it. So I don't think it's the right time.
So the suggested amendment... The $17,992 on page 21 is the amount you're talking about. Is that your proposed amendment?
Yeah, thanks, Charlie.
Okay. All right, is there a second? So this would be an adjustment upwards of $17,992? So the new total would be $3,451,157 for the budget? And the additional revenue would be $1,991,349? Do you want to double-check those numbers? Is that right? Yeah, okay. Dean verifies that's right. So is there a second? Second? The other line is actually in Article 5. So this is... Well, I'm... Let's get a microphone with you, Valerie.
Valerie Graham. I'm just pointing out that if you add that to the general budget, you then have to zero out Article 5.
We'll address that when we get to Article 5. That's right. This won't automatically do that. But I'm guessing that if this passed, when we get to Article 5, people would be okay with voting it down since they had approved it in the budget.
Can I further point out that we have always had this in the budget?
Yeah, you're getting on to... We're not discussing it, but you can in a minute, yes. So the only other question is to point in your amendment, Marty, to say the intent is to restore the... These into the donations section of the budget, which I think is obvious other than there are new line items that are different from what is in on pages 17 and 18. So it... And provided that they were all there to start with, it would essentially be adding some line item... So it, and provided that they were all there to start with, it would essentially be adding some line items and changing the bottom line. Okay, so it's been seconded in by Mitchell Brownstone. So we're on to discussion, so Mike?
Mike Russell, I rarely compliment the Select Board by custom, but I do applaud you for making an attempt to improve our process at town meeting. If it's your judgment that it's best to handle these donations in a separate article. I personally won't question that. I'm aware that there is a long budgeting process and an opportunity for people to educate themselves. I'm generally inclined to try change, to see if it improves our circumstances, and I'm in favor of the articles as structured. I would vote against this amendment, not out of meek-spiritedness, but out of attempt to try and move the town forward in some incremental fashion, which I think is the best way. So I would say, I would vote against this.
Tina?
Tina Flood. I guess my opinion on this one is, is that's why we vote you into the Select Board, is that this is not a place and a size of a group. It's bad enough to do it by a committee of five, but to do it by a committee of several hundred to decide how much should go to each individual organization or any of the organizations as a group seems incredibly cumbersome and probably unproductive to what needs to be accomplished. I think the Board understands the details of what's being proposed and can, as your, as our elected officials are capable of making the decision without the town discussing each individual line.
Thank you. Mike Antacca?
Down the back there.
Thanks. I just have a question, and if, I know we're talking about just moving the amount of money into the budget, but if we have questions about any of the content of that, what's currently in Article 5, does that have to wait, or could we ask it now?
Well, I think to the extent that page 21 is part of this motion, and it's presented as part of the budget, I think it's germane to talk about these line items, and I guess your point is there are new line items here that aren't in the budget already, but are also incorporated in Article 5.
Okay, so then I have a question.
But sort of, we're discussing it by reference.
Right, so on page 21.
Hold on a minute, we got a point of order, Dean. Wait for a microphone, please.
We're just meat in the middle here.
All right, 20 paces.
Dean Leary. It seems to me the motion is just to move the items. And why don't we wait to see if the items move before we discuss the particulars? If they don't move, we'll discuss them when we get to 5.
So the motion is to move them into the budget, then they could get discussed at that point. That's a very clean way to do it, I think, yes.
Okay, I will honor that, but I just have a question then on the current budget. Is there any money for the Special Investigations Unit in the budget somewhere that I don't see?
It is. On page 19, you'll see government taxes due, two sections up in the table from the bottom. It's a new line item because of this switch to having the other donations be a separate article. This Special Investigations, QZ, the Chittenden Unit for Special Investigations, is really an intergovernmental task force and was not seen as a voluntary donation by the town, but a necessary one.
Any other comments, questions? Mary, did you, I'm looking back.
So you're gonna add donations to the budget right now? And what are you gonna do when the article comes up? Maybe the article's been warned the way it's been warned, so are you just hoping that everybody is gonna vote no for that?
This is where the town gets to decide whatever it wants at that point, but I think there's some amount of hope for that, yes, or expectation.
Just gonna say that, that's pretty, it's my opinion.
I think common sense will prevail. If you're questioning whether the motion is germane, my decision can be appealed. But I've approved the motion as it was proposed. Other questions? Rick?
Rick Lunt. I think the question being presented is whether Article 5 automatically becomes germane or not. Could this motion be modified to include a statement that if passed, Article 5 would not be relevant, or the contents would be struck?
I don't play, so, there's a way to, you could, we could decide to table Article 3 and move to Article 5 and vote on that, but I don't see that in this case, and that's, we've done that in the past, when people wanted to know the outcome of another article. It was a little cleaner than, that was, had to do with completely separate monies. In this case, they're so incorporated that I think by this motion on Article 3, Article 5 will, again, stand alone, and if the town votes to include that also, we're gonna be doubling all these donations, and I just don't see that happening. Yes, go ahead.
Devin St. George, I'd like to call the question.
Okay, so it's Devin St. George. Is there a second? Lorna, seconded it. This requires a two-thirds vote, and that's why I have you stand, because we have to do a division in the House whenever there's a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of ceasing debate on the amendment signify by standing. Okay, thank you, you can sit now. All those opposed, stand. All right, the ayes to call the question appear to have it, the ayes do have it, we're cease debate. Now we're going right to a vote on the amendment to move the donations from page 21 into the Select Board's budget, as they're spelled out, and with the effect of increasing the budget to $3,451,157, and the corresponding tax revenues increased to $1,991,349. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so let's try, all those in favor, stand, please. Okay, you can sit now, all those opposed, stand. All right, I think the, I think we're gonna have to have a division of the House. We can do a paper ballot, as I think, well, if there are seven people who would like to do a paper ballot, this is the time to suggest that. Otherwise, yes.
Mr. Moderator, are you not able to make a judgment based on the previous method?
Are you asking if I could tell by the standing? I could until that side of the room stood up and, on a block, so that's why I'm...
Fair enough.
Yes, but the question, so, division of the House, yes, so, all right. So there's two ways of doing it. One would be a paper ballot, one would be people stand, and the Board of Civil Authority counts, and then the others stand. You ought to do it that way, okay. So, all those in favor of the motion, stand, and the Board of Civil Authority, come do your job. Yes? Excuse me? Yes, I could. So the motion is to increase the Select Board budget by $17,992, and put the donations spelled out on page 21 that were meant for Article 5 to go into the Select Board budget with a result of an increase to $3,451,157 for the selectmen budget, $1,991,349, all right, $1,991,349 to be raised by tax revenues. Yeah, standing is to approve that move from the donations into the Select Board budget.
Okay, now we can do the others.
Okay, all right, all those opposed now stand.
That's close. 55, 45, I guess, percent. Did any Select Board members stand?
I did.
Just one. 59, no.
Okay, we, thank you, sit down now, thanks. Okay, so the motion passes 70 to 59. So we now have a new bottom line of $3,451,157, and tax revenues to increase by $1,991,349. So we're back to the main motion of Article 3. Any other questions, comments, amendments? Matt?
Now that the contents of Article 5 are in Article 3, can the Select Board talk about that?
Say again?
Now that the contents of Article 5 are in Article 3, can the Select Board talk about it for a couple of seconds?
Yes, that'd be, that's a good idea.
So about four years ago, the Select Board made a change to not automatically renew donations. There seemed to be some charitable nonprofits that weren't actually requesting the funding. So the Select Board asked, sent a letter to every nonprofit that the town had been donating to, and asked them to send an annual request letter with an explanation of the direct services that they provide to Charlotteers. And that's been working pretty well and informatively for the last four years. That's why you'll see additions and deletions from town report to town report over the last several years. And the amount of the requests have changed. So that's one piece to talk about with the donations piece. The other is, I did a back-of-the-envelope calculation. It looks like the, because of the article, there's a, the town report breaks it out, and it's .0019 cents per $100 of property value. Working that up to a meaningful number, that's about $9.50 per $500,000 household that Charlotteers are being asked to go towards the sum of these donation requests. And so that's basically what the Select Board was considering traditionally and this year.
Okay. All right, questions, comments? In the corner, Jim Donovan, and then Margaret, and then Francis.
Thank you. Before I make a motion to add something in, I'm wondering if the donations to Front Porch Forum have been moved elsewhere as part of advertising or something under the Select Board budget?
Not that I know of. In general, anything that has been zeroed out did not receive a specific letter, an annual request.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to move back $200 to Front Porch Forum, because the town uses it significantly, to notify residents about meetings and agendas, and it has become the way I personally learn about all of the things that are going on officially in the town is through Front Porch Forum. And I think that even if they did not send a request back, I would make a motion to add it in, because they provide such a good service to the town.
So that's $200 you're suggesting add again?
Yes, the amount that was taken out.
Is there a second? So we have a second here. I'm thinking Hans Orhanian, Susan Orhanian. Okay, so the new total will be $3,451,357, with revenue to be $1,900, I mean, new tax revenue to be $1,991,549. with revenue to be one million nine, I mean, yeah, new tax revenue to be one million nine ninety-one, five forty-nine. All right, any discussion?
I would speak against this because they are not a nonprofit. They are a for-profit organization. They do a wonderful job of providing a service to the community, but each individual can make a donation if they choose to. But they are a for-profit organization.
Patrice? All right. Who else? Any other comments? Looks like we're ready for a vote on the, we're gonna vote on an amendment to add back in two hundred dollars for Front Porch Forum with a new total of three million four fifty-one, three fifty-seven, and new tax revenue of one million nine ninety-one, five forty-nine. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, say no. The noes appear to have it, the noes do have it, the motion fails. We're back to the modified budget of three million four fifty-one, one fifty-seven for budget expenses, and one million nine ninety-one, three forty-nine for tax revenues. Any other comments, questions? Margaret, and then Francis after you.
Margaret Russell, I just wanted to clarify, there's like nine thousand dollars in there for, is it VNA? Because VNA is now part of UVM, and I didn't know if that would alter how we allocated those funds.
Anybody know about that?
I don't know about that. That's something that we can take a look at, and, you know, money not spent during the year, if it makes sense to withhold that, would be returned to the taxpayers. UVM, I would have to look at, I think we'd have to look into that.
So, there's, the letters that our organizations sent in are in the town website, is my understanding? Did they? Can you look it up or no? Did they, did you receive a letter from VNA that's under VNA and to UVM instead, or? What is, what, can you clarify what the significance of the difference is? Are you worried about how it's titled, or something else? Where's the microphone?
I guess I was just thinking, since VNA is now part of UVM, you know, we may want to spend that nine thousand on the food shelf or cots or something that maybe could use our funding a little bit, you know? Maybe, maybe go to a different use. There are some other home nursing organizations maybe that we could consider, but nine thousand just doesn't seem like much of a difference to UVM versus some of these other organizations.
Wait, the microphone, please?
I'm giving you the microphone, and then you can give it back.
Okay.
Hello, Gretchen Morse. Just for your information, the VNA is a nonprofit, and so is UVM Medical Center. So, they're nonprofit organizations. The VNA has very specific services that deliver an incredible amount of service to our town. So, it kind of meets the standard that Marty was talking about in terms of a partnership. We don't have any other services here, and they are the major home health certified services. And the donations, I understand, go specifically to the VNA, and that's the way it was listed. So, that's just a clarification. And I don't know what we would do without them, frankly. But it brings up a bigger question to me, and that is, in the past, and I have been here in the past, there was a small committee of people who really looked at the applications for nonprofit donations. And they had a criteria, criteria that was very similar to what Marty was talking about when she made her amendment. And the criteria was pretty standard. Nonprofit, relationship with the town, necessary services used by a lot of people in this town. If they weren't here, our quality of life would be significantly different. Now, I don't know if those standards are still all in place, but this committee was charged with that. So, when it was part of the budget, the town folks knew that it had gone through a very intensive screening and a competitive screening, and there were criteria for it. And they could take it out if they wanted. But if you leave this nonprofit status just the way it is in an article in the future, people could turn the whole thing down. And believe me, if you did that, the quality of life in this town would be very different.
Over here. Uh, oop. Oh, okay, did you want to speak, Francis? And I'll get, get you next.
I agree with what Gretchen said, I think that was very well said. I, am I allowed to ask about a different nonprofit that's listed on here?
Yes, yes.
I'm just curious about the Winuski NRC District that was added in new this year, and it's seven hundred dollars. How does that affect Charlotte?
I'm sorry.
The Winuski NRC District, where you buy trees.
I think I have every letter of request here. The Winuski Natural Resources Conservation District is, including a request for consideration in our appropriation budget. It serves forty-three communities in Chittenden, Washington, and Orange Counties. Their mission is to improve water quality, soil health, and wildlife habitat in this district. They achieve these goals by working with local, state, and federal partners to implement on-the-ground projects, provide one-on-one assistance to landowners, and host educational workshops about natural resource conservation. It's a four-paragraph letter, I will press pause there. "We'd like to request a contribution of seven hundred dollars from the town so we can continue to be a resource to landowners and a voice for wise use of natural resources to improve the health and quality of life of residents across our district." Okay. Could I quickly go back? I found the letter of request from the VNA, formerly the VNA. They did send it as the University of Vermont Health Network. It's now called the Home Health and Hospice. They attached a very detailed letter, which I think speaks to Marty's point about the depth of knowledge in receiving these requests. They're respectfully requesting level funding from last year. And then they provided a breakout of the specific services they provided to Charlotteers. So, in fiscal year nineteen, Home Health and Hospice cared for ninety-two people in Charlotte during July eighteen through June of nineteen. There were six hundred and five nursing visits, three hundred and eighteen physical therapy visits, five speech therapy, thirty occupational therapy, and seventy-seven social work or social service, twenty-one licensed nursing assistant visits, a hundred and twenty-two homemaker visits, thirty-four waiver attendants. So, there was a total of twenty-five hundred and twenty-seven visits to Charlotte alone. And they're requesting basically a nine thousand dollar donation for those services.
Thanks. I'm Mary-Lou Keet, and I just want to follow up to reinforce what Gretchen said. I'm totally for the VNA, and I would vote for this year. But it does concern me that, I really appreciate that you read that, and that was all really good. What I would want to know as the town going forward is, is there a guarantee that this money, A, will stay with the VNA and not be absorbed into some, like, general fund for the Medical Health Center? And if they're going to be, if, as part of this larger organization, they're going to be asking for money, I think it's important that we not only get a breakdown of the service, which is undeniably good and helpful, but also a breakdown or some kind of budget of where that money is going to. Because if we're paying nine thousand dollars, and the most, and the majority of that money is going towards funding, you know, the additional, the addition of two managers, I wouldn't be for that. So, I would like that we just keep in mind for next year, when we're evaluating these things, that we need to get some information about what that funding is going towards, not just what they're giving to us.
I was trying to be sure, they did provide some.
Oh, good.
So, the total cost of services was two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars, of which two hundred thousand eighteen was covered by Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance, contracts, and patient fees. The remaining balance of seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-five is the lion's share of the nine thousand ninety-two. Where that slightly less than two thousand dollars is going would be, I think, what we could look into for next year.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, that was my first question. So, I have two questions, and it may pertain to why we had Article Five. A woman over here spoke that in the past, there was a rigorous vetting of the donation requests. So, before I get to follow on this one, has there been any vetting of those letters? Or have they just been received and put on the budget line item as requested?
Fritz, go ahead.
One of the things we did.
Turn your, oh, there you go.
Was a list with a website called, I think it's Charity Minder, which, for many charities, tells you what percent goes to administration, what percent actually goes to the activity. Unfortunately, most of these charities were not listed because, A, they didn't subscribe, or B, they weren't big enough, which was one of my initial concerns for putting this as a separate article because so many of these, we can't tell what the money goes to. The letter says, "We'd like it, we provide this service," but you don't tell us that you provide fifty percent of it is an administration cost, and fifty percent is actually a service. And I think from, although I won't be here for years forward, it'd be a good idea when we send them a letter, asking them to give us one, we make this a requirement, that they tell us what percentage of their funds go where.
I think my vetting question was more apropos to, you received the letter, and it sounded like in the past, there were such criteria set forth by the town by which those letters would be accepted and put forth to us for consideration. And my question is, was anything vetted in those letters towards whether they would be considered or not considered?
There was no standard list of items to vet against.
Okay, so, essentially, anybody could have submitted a letter, and it would have made that budget, long as they submitted a letter.
And provided some relevant direct service to Charlotteers.
Okay. So, then the next question pertinent to what's been asked here is to whether we can add, make a motion that would restrict the use of those donation monies to certain portions, like in the case of VNA, now UVM Health Services. Could we add an amendment to this that says they can only be used for certain components as opposed to landing in a general fund? Because while your letter says this is what they might use it for, there's nothing in there that says they have to use it for.
You're not proposing to amend anything right now, you're talking about in the future?
I'm asking, can we make an amendment that would restrict the use of the monies? So, for instance, if I made a motion that the VNA, now UVM Home Healthcare Services, that money can only be used to offset services provided and not to be used for managerial purposes, is that an acceptable amendment?
I would rule that beyond the scope of what was warned, I mean, especially since the common sense meaning of donation is you're giving it to them, not putting restrictions on it.
It's very common to have restrictions on donations, at least the ones I make.
Well, not if you want the tax benefit, but that may be a different issue.
Now, if I make them to Shelburne Farms, I can restrict what it's used for.
Right, but the criteria used in the past has been, does it serve Charlotte? Is it a, is it nonprofit? I mean, there's actually statute, I believe, from my years on the Select Board. And when that committee was on, that spoke to the criteria. I guess I'm not comfortable with adding restrictions like that. It's, it's, um, yeah, I think that goes beyond what was warned. But as I said early, the moderator can be overruled if you think that's not proper. Point of order, let's, wait for a microphone for your point of order. Stand up with your, so we can, all right. Microphone, right there.
I don't know if it's out of order or point of order, but aren't we voting on the budget? If the article is the budget, I would suggest the moderator advise the person that maybe make an advisory motion.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I was going with it, I think this is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's not germane, I think it goes beyond what was warned in terms of this budget, to the extent that these detailed line items spell out how the money gets spent. Yep.
Peter Knobbs. Unless I missed something.
Peter Knobbs.
Traditionally has been a VNA report and the town report. I didn't see such a report this year, and I'm just wondering if we could make a condition of these donations that they have, they provide something like Matt just shared with us that letter. It would be really helpful to have a breakdown of the services and maybe alleviate some people's anxiety around it.
Yeah, anybody want to speak to that? I mean, was there a cost cutting measure to not put it in the town report, and it's on the website instead?
That is what I was just discussing with Dean. Dean mentioned it does increase the cost of the town report if that information would be informative and valuable. I think the sense on the dollar probably makes sense if the town decides to keep moving forward with making charitable nonprofit donations.
All right, anything else? Who do we got here? Okay, go ahead.
David Blanshine, I'd like to call the question of Article Three.
Okay. All right, is there a second? Okay, that requires two-thirds vote, so all those in favor of ceasing debate on a article as it stands, stand up, please. Okay, you can sit down. All those opposed to ceasing debate, stand. All right, let the record note that John Rosenthal stood. Okay, so, we're ready for a vote on, this is on the budget article, the final vote perhaps. The budget as amended is now at three, I'm gonna read it in full. "Will the voters of town approve the Select Board budget of three million four hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars for the fiscal year July first to 2020 to June thirtieth, 2021? In addition to those monies raised pursuant to Article Four and Five, if any, of which an anticipated sum of one million nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars will be raised by property taxes, and an anticipated sum of one million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eight will be raised by non-tax revenues, which approval shall not become effective until the voters approve such budget by Australian ballot vote in accordance with the requirements of the Charter of the Town of Charlotte." All right. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, Article Three passes. Article Four. Will the voters of the town approve raising the sum of $57,000 by property taxes, in addition to those monies raised pursuant to Article Three and Article Five, if any, to be allocated to the Trails Reserve Fund, which approval shall not become effective until the voters further approve this Article Four by Australian ballot vote in accordance with the requirements of the Charter of the Town of Sherlot? Is there a motion to approve this? Where's Ajat? Is he here? Or Ethan, you want to be recognized? Ethan, all right, there's Ajat. You say so, move Ajat? All right. All right, is there a second? Okay. Ajat? Who is the second? Mary? Okay. All right. As the motion, Ajat is on the Trails Committee, I've recognized him, so he can speak first to this article. I think they want to bring the screen down and do a presentation, is that correct? And we've got 10 minutes. And actually, I guess one other point is, Robert's Rules allows the first person to make the motion to have 10 minutes. If there's no objection, I want to allow him to yield to other Trails Committee members, but still keep it within 10 minutes. Any objection?
Ready? Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name is Ajat Terrell. This is, hi. Ethan McLaughlin.
Can you hear?
Okay, there we go. Sorry. We're here to present in support of Article Four. It's a very short presentation. We'll go through the background of the trails in the town, the cost and scope of Article Four, the benefits, and some frequently asked questions. Okay, just the background on the trails in Sherlot. For several decades, we've been proactively growing our public land acreage, conserving land, getting easements and right-of-ways, and in no small part, the Trails Committee was formed to connect the dots and bring this, bring some of our public assets to the public. In the 1990s, we added a Keystone Trail, which is a town link trail. By Keystone, I'm meaning an anchor trail for all the other footpaths. The objective of the town link trail is to connect various walking footpaths and right-of-ways between the Town Beach, Sherlot Village Center, and East Sherlot. A little bit of background on the town link trail. Most of the town trails that we have, or easements, are what we call Classes One through Three as by the United States Park Service. These are your rougher footpaths and trails. However, the town link trail is planned as a trail Class Five. This class is broadly defined as something at least six feet, structured and graded surface, suitable for walkers, bikers, strollers, and cross-country skiers, and the trail's smoother service in relatively flat elevation is, makes accessible to a wider range of residents. The town link trail is the only trail of the standard that we envision, being the anchor, and it will eventually connect to the wider footpaths that we have around the town, thus forming an integrated and coherent network between East Sherlot and the Town Beach. We planned the town link trail to be rolled out in distinct phases. It is a medium amount of infrastructure, so it was never meant to be built all at once. To date, we have built two miles of the town link trail, the Cohousing portion and the Melissa and Trevor Mack portion, which are connected by the under, the new underpass on Route Seven that connects the East and the West. Here is a map of the town link trail. The purple portion, I know it's a little bit difficult to read.
That is the purple portion?
That is what has been completed. The green portion on State Park Road is what will be shortly completed in 2020, and the red portion is the next phase that we're building. And we have a, a trail today that is a really nice trail, but it's not really going to any of the major centers, so we're making a push to get to the Village Center. We have a moderate amount of use, which we'll cover over, like, cover in the next slides, but we feel as, if we can just connect the dots more, we'll get more use. The blue sections are further phases going to the beach and a, to East, East Sherlot Village. Okay? I'm going to pass it over to Ethan to go over the funding and scope.
Hi, everybody. I want to talk a little bit more about the specific funding and scope for Article Four. So the completed portions of the trail, the, the two miles that are already there, and the underpass under Route Seven, those were largely funded with state and local, state and federal grant money. Received several grants from Forest Parks and Recreation. We've received a $50,000 grant from, from VTранs that we've used for scoping, and it was state and federal money that, that paid for the underpass, which was, you know, the single most expensive portion of the trail, and it's already been, been constructed. So since these completed portions were constructed, the, the Trails Committee has been continuing to work hard. We've been, you know, pursuing permits and, and development of the trail, you know, expanding out the, the plans, acquiring easements, and applying for additional grants. In 2017, we applied for another VTранs grant and were denied. So again, in, in 2019, we applied for a Forest Park and Recreation Grant for the State Park Road section, and that was also denied. So we're continuing to try and raise money to, to finish this trail and increase its utility. So we've raised thousands of dollars from private donors. In this year's fundraising effort, we raised $8,000 alone. We've also benefited from countless hours of, of volunteer labor, you know, both in the form of volunteer trail maintenance, but also donated development and permitting work. Jim Donovan has very generously donated, I think close, probably more than $15,000 of, of development work and permitting to, to, you know, for these trail sections we'd like to build out. But in our conversations with Forest Park and Recreation and VTранs, they've made it fairly clear that additional grant funding is unlikely for the, the next sections of the trails. They're, they're prioritizing, seem to be prioritizing more, you know, sidewalks and, and, you know, paved paths, perhaps in other parts of the, of the states. So in order to take this trail to the, to the finish line and, and realize the, the vision and increase its utility, it's going to require funding from the, from the Town Trails Fund. So what Article Four asks for is an additional $57,000 to go into the Trails Fund. Now, together with the existing balance that we already have in the Trails Fund, that money is going to allow us to complete the half-mile State Park Road section, so that will link up the existing town link trail with, with Mount Philo, and also build an additional half-mile of new trail immediately south and/or north of the town center. We'll be looking at exactly where to build that additional half-mile, you know, based on where we'll get the most bang for our buck, what'll best position us to, to win additional funding from, from non-taxpayer sources. But we've, you know, the $57,000 fund is, is based on what we estimate the, the cost of, of a half-mile of additional construction, which were, based on what we, you know, I'd call informal quotes, not necessarily quotes, but the ballpark we've gotten from experienced trail builders is to expect something on the order of $20 a foot. So the, the $57,000 works out to $6.10 per $100,000 of assessed value. So for a home assessed at $300,000, that would be $18.30. So beyond Article Four, you know, the Trails Committee has a, has a five-year phase development plan, and although Article Four sort of stands on its own, we envision it being the, the first step in that plan to finish the town link trail so that it extends from Mount Philo to the town center and onto Lake Road. And although we're going to continue pursuing any available grants and funding sources and continuing to, to raise donations, we do anticipate making comparable funding requests of the voters over each of the next four years, so that we can finish this phase of the trail that we've been, been talking about building since the, since the 1990s. And by leveraging taxpayer funds with, with private donations and, and volunteer labor, we can really dramatically expand the utility of this, of this trail. You know, we've done the hard part. We've got that underpass there, and by modestly expanding it on, on either side, we can just dramatically increase its usefulness to residents of the, of the town and, and make it so it's really connecting the town center and the Mount Philo and going down toward the, toward the beach. So with that, I'm going to just turn it back to Ajat, he's going to talk to some of the benefits.
First and foremost, one of the main benefits is the quality of life. It promotes healthy living and a lifestyle, sorry. Safety due to high vehicle speeds, walking, running, or cycling. Our roads are really for only the enthusiast when it comes to biking or walking. The town link trail will provide a much larger number of people an opportunity to walk, including children. The trails are more relaxed, a natural setting. I can say personally, when I go to Burlington and use the bike paths, I'll see several children from first to seventh grade and from Sherlot. So we do, we do walk and bike. Financially responsible, they're an investment. Trails like this are investment, but one of the things that is, the positive side is the maintenance, and this is approved by several studies, is relatively low. We feel like we can cover the maintenance by donations and not any taxpayer funding. Property prices in the long run, strong trail infrastructure increases property values. I've looked at several studies. I couldn't find an example where property prices went down. It's always been neutral or positive. And demographics and children, trails help attract families with young children. And, you know, our school has been pretty level with student population, and every student we get, every family we attract gives us state funding. We've lost state funding some years, and I think the trail will do something to make and push more of a family, more families moving in. We're going to end the presentation with some of the responses we've gotten during our outreach, some of the concerns, some of the objections for some. And the main one is, I don't use trails. So it's true that if you have any public asset, only part of the population will use it. Saying that, we find that we found a lot of people do use trails through some rudimentary statistics. We've also looked at more formal surveys carried out in Vermont, and there's a large percentage of people who use trails or want to use trails. So we, we feel that this is not a niche project. A lot of people will use these trails. The longer and more connected they are, the more the user ship will go up, and that's why we really want to push this to the next step, to put it on the ballot for the public to vote on. Trail use, do enough people use the trail? This is sort of following up on our, my point from the last slide. We did some statistics, we did surveys, we did counts, we sat there with some, sat there and counted people, and there's a moderate amount of use, and this is with a trail that doesn't really go from anywhere to anywhere yet. It really is picking two kind of random points, and people are finding it. So if we can just continue and push this major investment that we've already made and do the finishing touches, we think we can really get, people want to use the trail. Let's, why $57,000? We have a budget for the trail. We thought the whole thing was a bit too much to do one go. We'd like to prove that as we spend, user ship goes up on a year-by-year basis. So what we propose is, we divided it in five. We want to add the half-mile and prove that, based on last year's metrics, more people will use the trail. The other thing is, when we do these bids, we have to go out to bid to do these projects. If we get any smaller size of funding, we have more inefficiencies, and the overall project might, might cost more. Ethan, want to finish it off? Ethan will just finish off the last two.
So there's a question of, of who will maintain the trail. Again, the studies that are out there support a, a low build-to-maintenance cost ratio. We do a tremendous amount of volunteer trails maintenance through the Trails Committee and, and volunteer workdays, and that's the way we've maintained our, our existing trail infrastructure, including the existing town link trail. And we haven't found maintenance to be a, a particularly significant expense or something that we're not able to cover out of, you know, certainly our, our annual donations more than exceed the, the maintenance costs. Then we have the question of safety. If, if not many people are injured today, why is, why is safety a concern? And our thought is that, you know, most people choose not to bike or walk on our, our town roads at all, especially the roads that are going to be bypassed by the, the town trail. You know, currently, there's, there's no safe way for families to get from the town center to the town beach without walking or biking on Ferry Road or, or Green Bush Road, and these are busy roads with, with no shoulders. You know, you see adult cyclists and, and runners out there on occasion, and I'm a runner myself, and I can tell you, going up Green Bush Road, there's that blind dip by the cemetery, I've leaped into the, you know, shoulder many times, and I'm sure many of you have had the experience of swerving out of the way as some runner or cyclist was, was heading uphill. It never feels safe being on those, on those roads, and, you know, yes, knock on wood, we haven't had a lot of incidents yet, but you know, how many do we have to reduce for it to be, for it to be worth it? And I, I do think that the town link trail, you know, I, I would never allow my, let my son ride his bike down to the, down to the beach on Ferry Road or, or Green Bush. On the town link trail, there, there'd be a way. So finally, do we need trails? And I think we do. They, they attract, increase our quality of life and just make the town a more pleasant and desirable place to be. I have never been out on the trail and not seen other people using it, and that's at, at any time of year. And people, you know, in, in every conceivable demographic and, and age, you see, you see children, you see young people, and you see people using it in a, in a variety of ways. And one of the things that I love about the town link trail, as opposed to our more rugged hiking trails, is that it's so much more accessible to such a, a wider variety of, of users. The other thing is that, you know, the most expensive part of developing a trail system for most towns, the hardest part, is, you know, acquiring the, the land rights, and for the most part, we've, we've done that. You know, there are, there are a handful of, of easements we'd still like to get along this, you know, long stretch, but, you know, for the most part, all of the easements are, are there, and we've, we've made this tremendous investment over, over many decades in protecting our, protecting our hills, farms, meadows, fields, and forests, and investing in a trail that connects all of those, those assets and allows people to get out and experience them and enjoy them. It's really, you know, it really leverages that existing -- It's really, you know, it really leverages that existing investment and improves its utility tremendously. So we are, we are asking for your support and we don't ask for it lightly, but we think that the TownLink Trail will develop, you know, this is an investment in a, in a piece of infrastructure that's going to be here, you know, 100 years from now and that generations of, of Sherlotters will use. And we really think it's going to improve the town. Thank you.
Are we going to put the screen up then? Does, does anybody want to see anything on those slides before we put the screen up? Okay. Okay, I see a hand down here on the end.
Peter, Peter Nopez. I believe Mount Philo State Park-
A little louder.
Peter Nopez. I believe the State Park, Mount Philo State Park is due for a lot of renovations quite soon. Very heavily used park. Has any attempt by the Trail Committee been made to Vermont Parks to maybe pitch in for the link along State Park Road? I mean, Mount Philo State Park is the final destination on the east end, right?
Ken?
Hi, Lori Thompson. We did meet with the, the State Park people, what, three months ago, I think. They gave a presentation to Select Board, any Select Board members that were there and the Trails Committee to discuss all their updates and what they're doing. And we have been meeting with them now for about four or five years, working alongside them to know exactly what they're doing and trying to dovetail that with the TownLink Trail. Thanks for asking.
Hey, Bob?
Bob Mazzaris. Noticing your one slide, you said it's going to be $57,000 each year for five years for this project. So we're embarking not on a 50,000, $57,000 project, we're committing to spend 285,000. I have to question, we need trails, yes. We have a good trail system. Do we need a perfect trail system? Or should we simply eliminate this funding from the budget and continue to level fund the $5,000 each year for maintenance? I say we have other priorities in this town, particularly the building we're standing in for maintaining and improving the quality of our education structure. I question seriously whether we need to spend 285,000 over five years to improve the trail system to this level. Thank you.
Jim Donovan?
Thank you.
Hold on a minute. Hey, Mike Krasnow, can you keep it down a little bit? Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would argue that from my point of view, I think this is just one of the many different assets that the town has. And I don't think that it's creating something that's going to be the Cadillac. It's basically just something that's going to be as useful as possible. I see it primarily as a transportation system, allowing people to get around the town more easily without using vehicles to get to the higher destination points. And that even though not necessarily everybody in the town might be using it, I still think it's important because not everybody in the town goes to the senior center, although we're getting close. And not everybody uses the library, not everybody goes over to the town hall to do things, but we still support all those because it's all part of our larger community. And to me, this is a vital piece that's halfway there and really needs to be developed so that it can eventually serve the entire town, starting at the town beach and going all the way over to East Charlotte. And to do that, it is going to cost some money. This year, the way I'm reading this motion is that we're approving $57,000 and that'll make the trail better. We're not approving 200,000. The Trails Committee basically said that's what they're hoping to do. That's what they're going to be proposing to do, but right now, we're only approving this year and that next year we'll be asked to approve it again, is what I'm assuming. So that we can evaluate it on a year-by-year basis as to whether it's actually helping the town or not helping the town. But I think their approach of providing a little bit more of the town segment, our trail segment, to see if we do get more ridership when we make a, a better destination point on the trail makes sense. And then that'll help inform the town that their investment was being used and we can make a better decision next year if they come back for a request for more money. But I strongly support this particular motion.
Margaret?
I just want to make sure people know too, that approving it today just means that, that this will go onto Australian ballot. So we're asking you to approve this so that the whole town can consider it and, and, and vote on that. And I strongly support it too.
Jenny Cole and then Marty?
Yep, Jenny Cole. I had a question about the Ferry Road Trail, the trail, the mode trail along Ferry Road with the bridge that was washed off its supports last fall during the Halloween storm. I'm wondering if that's part of the trail that you're planning or if it's, does the Trails Committee oversee the management of that trail? It seems like a really good location to put some funding to improve that trail. It takes people off of Ferry Road, away from the road. It's much safer, but right now, it's really not in very good shape at all.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. There, there are a number of, I'd call more primitive mode trails that, that intersect by Ferry Road to the, to the west of the, of the train station. One of the areas that we'd be looking at closely in terms of where to construct a additional trail would be, you know, in the section along Ferry Road from the town center down past the, the train section. That would actually connect up with three different mode and, and primitive trails that are, that are existing. And in terms of supporting connectivity and something that, you know, might increase our, our likelihood of, you know, whether or not it's unlikely, but to the extent you can increase connectivity, that, that vastly increases your likelihood of getting, getting grant funding. So that's an area that we're looking at very closely and it's an area where we think trails make a lot of sense. We don't have sidewalks in, in Charlotte, but there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that goes up and down Ferry Road. We have an existing trail and trail easements that go along half of it. And we'd like to connect those up to the, to the TownLink Trail and, and, you know, make it, as we talked about, that the point of the TownLink Trail is taking all these existing trails we have and having a, a Keystone Trail that, that connects them all and makes them vastly more useful. So a trail connecting into those existing trails along Ferry Road, you know, including repairing the existing bridge is something we're looking at very closely.
Marty?
Hi, I'm Marty Illick. The TownLink Trail is, the definition of it sort of changes every now and again for me. When we first started the concept of really making the wider six-foot trail, which is the big cost of, it's a very special trail. And linking the park to wonderful destinations like the beach or the town hall, that was the original concept. And I know because I was on the board when we applied for the funding to do it. But I'm a little bit wanting to opine about Creep. Like there's beautiful feeder trails, that's all very good, but to promote the TownLink Trail as beyond the part two, whatever the destination to the ferry, the beach, the town hall, these big destinations, I think is a strong idea. And I want to support that. And it's expensive, but I'd love to see the budget be just that. The feeder trails are sort of a B and the big trail is the A. And that I'd love to see a budget for and the, the long-term cost. I want to support it. With the Mount Philo State Park in, you know, showing us their new numbers, it is like stunning. That is an economic opportunity for our town. And yeah, I think that's, along with our new farms, these, this trail are really the foundational parts of what could be new businesses that are land-based, you know, based upon the land that we have here. So I love the idea. I just want to get a little more definition about the actual trail that we all want to buy into and the six-foot wide one, that's the big one. And don't, don't go beyond that when you present to us because those are other things. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. I think the map we showed, Creep, we all hate Scope Creep, are this, the Class V Trail is as it was in the beginning. It is from Mount Philo Ridge to-
The ladder. The ladder. Hold it closer to you.
Oh, it's just from Mount Philo State Park down to the Village Center and down to Lake Road. Okay, that is, that is the plan. Anything beyond is a Class 1 to 3 trail, things we already have. And once you get east of the State Park, we have a great gravel road network. We have a lot of right-of-ways. We have a lot of things we can stitch together that are perfectly safe and beautiful walking ways. What we're trying to do is create one solid piece in the middle that's accessible to a wider public, strollers, wheelchairs, bicycles. Does that address the question? Good.
Right on that hand there.
Thanks, Carol Clay. I'm-
Name please.
Carol Clay. I'm delighted to support this effort. Oh, it is louder. I'm delighted to support this effort for several reasons. One, historically, I understand how much work the Trails Committee has put into grant writing and the amount of money they've gotten from grants. Two, all the volunteer effort people have made to maintain the trails we're getting. Three, I can't think of a better way for me to put effort into the town for future generations. I use trails a lot. I love trails and I can't wait for my children and their children, et cetera, to get a chance to be part of a trail system.
Right here, David Garbos. And then Valerie. Ah, David Garbos right there behind you. And then you're next, Valerie.
Hi, thanks. Hi, everybody. I'm Dave Garbos. I have friends in town who need to walk for their health. I have friends in town who walk and they run and they bike and they don't want the constant worry about being crushed by cars. Other, you know, the state spent over a million dollars building us an underpass after we begged them. Other towns around us have, are spending millions of dollars on their cheesy little town trails that go from nowhere to nowhere. This, these are just like trails along the sides of the roads. They're, they're not complicated. They're not expensive. I'm not sure why, why has it taken so long to build this? It's been since the 1990s.
I'll let other people follow up on the obvious answer initially. I've been on the Trails Committee for three years. And we, we, we have money for maintenance and we have volunteer hours and we work on the existing trails. From my viewpoint, we got into the initial phase of the project through grants. And we were, we tried to continue to get those grants, but at some point after trying two or three years, we realized that the, the nature of the grant system has changed and we need to move on in a different way. You're right, it's not that hard. We've got the easement. It's actually relatively inexpensive, some of the portions we're trying to finish off. But I, I think from the Trails Committee, I would like to say that we have paused a little bit for a couple of years. I don't, it might come across as poorly, but we've been working very hard. We just haven't had the money to build anything new.
Dale? Oh, yes, yes, sorry, sorry.
Valerie Graham, call the question.
Okay. All right, we had a motion. Is there a second? Second? Susan Hahnian? Hahnian. Okay, the motions have been made to call the question, requires a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of ceasing debate on Article Four, stand please. Okay, you may sit now. All those opposed, you may stand. All right, I think guess ready to vote? So we are voting on Article Four. Will the voters of the town approve raising the sum of $57,000 by property taxes in addition to those monies raised pursuant to Article Three and Article Five, if any, to be allocated to the Trails Reserve Fund, which approval shall not become effective until the voters further approve this Article Four by Australian ballot, vote in accordance with the requirements of the Charter of the Town of Charlotte? All those in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. The motion carries. Okay, we're on to the fun one. Article Five. Will the voters of the town approve raising the sum, sum of $17,922 by property taxes in addition to those monies raised pursuant to Articles Three and Article Four, if any? Article Three and Article Four, if any, to be distributed to the non-for-profit organizations identified on page 20 on of the town report specifically as requested by those organizations? Which approval shall not become effective until the voters approve, further approve this Article Five by Australian ballot, vote in accordance with the requirements of the Charter of the Town of Charlotte?
So moved.
Okay. And second, Valerie? Well, I'm looking for a second and, and Matt's approved it, so you can speak first, Matt.
So in the spirit of not doubling the donation appropriation to charitable nonprofits, I'd like to make a friendly amendment.
Okay. If you're trying to zero it out, the proper way to do that is just to vote it down, but...
We've kind of-
We've done this before.
Molded this over through the Charter and I think to present something on the ballot, it needs to be voted affirmatively at a zero-dollar amount.
Okay. All right, so go ahead, sorry.
This is the last year of the Charter. So I'd like to make an amendment to reduce the sum of Article Five by $17,992.
Is there a second? Okay, so second by Wally Gates. All right, we're on to a second, a motion to amend Article Five to set it to zero dollars. So is there any discussion of that?
Valerie Graham, call the question.
Okay, there's been a motion to call the question. Is there a second? Susan Hahnian seconded it? All right, this requires a two-thirds vote. We get to take some exercise. All those in favor of ceasing debate on the amendment to Article Five to put it to zero, please stand. Okay, all those, you may sit down. All those opposed to the amendment to zero out Article Five, please stand. Okay, we're ready for a vote. This is, will the voters of the Town of Charlotte, our town approve raising the sum of zero dollars by property taxes in addition to those monies raised pursuant to Article Three and Article Four, if any, to be distributed to the nonprofit organizations that-
we do on Front Porch Forum, the Charlotte News, the Citizen, to really let people know what happened at a town meeting.
Yeah.
I, I guess I'm questioning, if we vote it down and, and vote no, would it then not appear on the Australian ballot?
Yes, it is required to, so the Charter states that it is required to be on the Australian ballot as warned. Currently, it's warned with a blank. So, any budget-related article, as I understand it, that isn't passed at town meeting, the Select Board has the discretion to put in a number for the April vote, which can then be voted up or down.
Thank you. So, what you're saying is the cleanest way is to put it to zero, so you don't have discretion at that point. We're approving zero. Yeah, Mary, and then Lane.
So, we're gonna have a ballot that says zero. And not everybody is gonna understand why we have a whatever. And so, then there'll be a certain number of people who will be sad that we're not giving any money to donations. And instead of voting in favor of the zero, they'll vote against the zero, and then it would go back to you to revisit again. Yes?
If the nay vote was the majority at the ballot, it would be up to the Select Board to decide whether or not to ask for another vote. Given that it's clear everyone put the money back into the budget in Article 3, I doubt the Select Board at the, at that future date, if that happened, would decide to have another vote on this. If enough informed people and a good informational process was put out there that people knew what the zero meant, and that the money was being provided through Article 3, and it passed, then this would be the last complicated mechanism of the town charter, as it's going to be sunsetting in July.
All right, Lane?
Lane Morrison. I think it's just been said, so if this motion's approved to zero, in April, when it comes up, a yes vote or a no vote, it makes no difference. I mean, it just, it goes away.
So, so actually, we're on points of order, I think, here. We had a call the question, or did we?
Oh, yeah. I think Valerie called the question.
Yeah, just...
Didn't Valerie call the question? Was...
And then, so we're ready to vote right now, on the amendment. Okay.
I just have, I'd like to follow up on what Lane said, if I may.
It's a point, if a point of order, yes, yes.
Yeah, so the, you're right, in that it's a yes or no, and, but, but the difference is, is that the folks that are voting, I think they, they should know that those funds were put back into the budget.
Right. Okay. Is it a point of order? No? It's gotta be a point of order, because we're in a, we're on, we had called the question, I was waiting to, I was waiting to, I have a, I was waiting to... I think the question's already been called. And we just had a point, a point of order before we actually made the vote. Did we get the exercise, though? Did we? Probably not. So, I think, I think it's... Not on this? Okay. All right. So, we've had the question called, then we've had a number of points of order. So, I'll entertain more points of order if there are any. And otherwise, Dean, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. It's a kettle of fish, isn't it? If we vote no, does that prevent it from moving forward to the ballot? I'd like to know if there's a way to save the whole town from a lot of confusion and prevent it from going forward to the Australian vote.
When you say, if we vote no on the, if we vote the article down, not if we vote article with zero in it. Right. But we're, we're not talking about that right now. So, we're talking about the amendment to make it zero. So, although I guess it's relevant to the point about whether to choose to do this or not, other than our discussion has ended.
I can look in the Charter. I, I'm pretty sure that if it's a budget-related article that was voted on at town meeting, it must be voted on by the Australian ballot in April, according to the Charter.
Okay, Dave, go ahead.
David Skirmerhorn. It's a point of order question. Is it possible to amend Article 5 verbiage and not just the amount of money?
I was thinking that myself. I think we could.
Then, I think someone ought to propose a verbiage that explains that the monies were put back into the Select Board budget, and have that in the printed article for vote in April.
You, you can't change this article, I mean, I think voting it down is the cleanest way of making it zero. Try to change it to be beyond what was warned gets dicey. That's when it becomes non-german. So, I, I mean, I think what you're proposing is something along the lines of we're gonna vote to put these money back in the budget.
No. No. My suggestion is, all you change, what you do is add just a sentence in there that says that these monies were put back into the Select Board budget. Or these proposed, whatever the verbiage is.
I don't think it's necessary.
It would explain to the voters where the money went.
So, it'd be adding clarifying language. So, do you want to propose a secondary motion? Let's, I gotta think about the process we're in right now. We, we're in point of order, we had... We haven't started, we haven't voted on the motion to cease debate by Valerie. So...
The question was called.
Right. Right. So, we, that's, it's not really debatable, point of order. So, I think we had a vote on that, and we'll be coming back to the main article where it can be amended again. So, I think that's a clean way to do it. So, if there are no more points of order, if all those, yes?
I believe if we vote against calling the motion, we can return back to discussion. Is that clear?
That's true. It's a, yes, it's a two-thirds requirement, so yes.
All right, so we can do this later if we want more discussion by not agreeing with this call of the...
Okay. So, all those in favor of the motion to zero the amount in Article 5, please stand. All, cease debate on Article 5. Cease debate on the amendment for Article 5, zeroing it out. Stand. Oh, boy. Okay, all those seeking, may sit down. All those opposed to ceasing debate, please stand. Okay, so, we're gonna vote on the amendment to zero out Article 5. Will the voters of the town approve raising the sum of zero dollars by property taxes in addition to those monies raised pursuant to Article 3 and Article 4, if any, to be distributed to the non-for-profit organizations identified on page 21 of the town report specifically as requested by those organizations? Which approval shall not become effective until the voters further approve this Article 5 by Australian ballot vote in accordance with the requirements of the Charter of the Town of Charlotte? All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. The motion to amend Article 5 to zero dollars passes. Okay, now we're back to Article 5 with no dollars in it. Wally?
Walter Gates. I move the previous question.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Valerie? All right, there's a motion to cease debate. This requires two-thirds votes and exercise. All those in favor of the motion to cease debate on Article 5, as amended, please rise. Thank you. You may sit down. All those opposed, please rise. All right, we're ready to vote on Article 5 with zero dollars. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. The Article 5 passes. All right, now we're on to Article 6, which is at the very bottom of your page. No, I know, I'm just kidding. Article 6 is, is, are we supposed to do it, or pretend that we did it? So, so it's a contest to find, who can find Article 6 in this document? You got it there? Okay. So, Article 6 was inadvertently left off, and it has to do with, Article 6 is, will the voters of the town vote to authorize the Select Board to borrow money by issuance of bonds or notes not in excess of anticipated revenues for the next fiscal year? I don't know if I need to go through the history of this, but it got left out, and the town attorney recommended that Select Board sign an updated warning, which has been done and posted in 20 places in town, or three places. And we're gonna vote on it, and then we're gonna reaffirm it on April 6th at the town hall, where you all are gonna have a lot of fun in there. Okay, so, Article 6, will the voters of the town vote to authorize the Select Board to borrow money by issuance of bonds or notes not in excess of anticipated revenues for the next fiscal year? Do I hear a motion to approve? Move? Valerie Graham, a second? Okay, Jim Donovan seconded. Any discussion? Ready for a vote? All those in favor of Article 6, will the voters of the town vote to authorize the Select Board to borrow money in issuance of bonds or notes not in excess of anticipated revenues for the next fiscal year? Do I hear a motion to approve? Move? Valerie Graham, a second? Okay, Jim Donovan seconded. Any discussion? Ready for a vote? All those in favor of Article 6, will the voters of the town vote to authorize the Select Board to borrow money in issuance of bonds or notes not in excess of anticipated revenues for the next fiscal year? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article 6 passes. Okay, now we're on the next page. Article 7. That's to be voted on by paper ballot. Okay, so, what's that? Okay.
Four sentences to read. So, what does this mean to be paper ballot? To have it on by...
Okay, so, Article 7, to be voted on by paper ballot. Will the voters of town authorize the elimination of the office of Lister and replace it with a professionally qualified assessor appointed by the Select Board, who shall have the same powers, discharge the same duties, proceed in the discharge thereof in the same manner, and be subject, subject to the same liabilities as are prescribed for Listers or the Board of Listers under the provisions of Title 32 VSA? There's, all right. Do I hear a motion, move, a motion to move? But Betsy Taggats moved Article 7. Is there a second? Jim Donovan seconded. Okay, you have the floor, Betsy.
Hello, I'm Betsy Taggats. I'm the chairperson of the Board of Listers. And I just want to, just a couple minutes of backstory, how this article came about. The Board of Listers has proposed to the Select Board that the town adopt a provision to eliminate the Board of Listers and allow the appointment of an assessor for the tax year 2020 going forward. The Board is made up of three individuals. I am planning on stepping down this year as the primary Lister. Bruno Murphy will be stepping down this year. And the third position is vacant, with no one running to fill it. The sustainability of the Board going forward is tenuous at best. In addition to finding a qualified person to take the lead in the Lister's office, it is becoming increasingly challenging to find residents willing to run and fill their remaining seats on the Board. This problem is not unique to Charlotte and has been an issue with many towns. The job has evolved a great deal in the past few years and requires someone who is preferably experienced in assessing, or at least possesses the skill set to learn the many responsibilities involved with maintaining and managing the grand list. Consequently, the state has provided an option for towns to appoint an assessor by having the town approved an article on town meeting day, an option we are exercising now. The appointed assessor will be doing the same job as the primary Lister, and little, if anything, will change.
Okay, any discussion?
David, David Perra. Over the years, I've found the Lister's files very useful in a couple of cases. Will those be maintained?
Yes, everything should remain the same. It'll all be maintained.
Marty?
So, the Listers over the years have been appointed or elected. We all vote on them. They started out with stipends, then they wanted a little more money, which they deserved, so we got them little raises to make it be, you know, fair. And now, we're faced with, you know, folks in the office that don't really want to be there in that kind of capacity and pay. It's sort of half-volunteer, so to speak. But to suggest in this article that we want to let those nice people go and hire or appoint, I guess is the word, an assessor, which is a very, very different job description than a Lister. Listers basically do administrative work in the office, keep the beautiful files, and allow for people to come in and get questions answered, et cetera, et cetera. That's a very different role than Eddie Clodfelter, who's our assessor. So, you know, 25 hours is what I calculated. Okay, I'll finish up, Betsy, you can reply. But 25 hours, I believe, is what the total hours per week is for Lister hours. So, we need 25 hours of office work to support the town. And I think we should hire a person to work part-time to do that job. It's just, let's, let's go to a paid position versus having a highly qualified assessor come in and do office work. That's, you know, Betsy can clarify, but that's how I'm reading this as a proposal, and I didn't, didn't really want to support that, even though I totally get that we need to have a change. And I do feel we should pay for what we need. It doesn't have to be running for election or an appointment, it can be a paid position, new, new job.
Okay. No, and I understand your concern. Basically, a Lister and assessor are one and the same thing. A Lister is an elected official, an assessor is an appointed. And Clodfelter is an appraiser. That's a big, big difference. It's also a big span and education difference. So, the primary Lister and assessor basically will do the same thing. So, it could be the primary Lister then becomes the assessor. I'm not suggesting that, but that's done in town. So, it's typically a primary Lister is the one that goes to the educational classes, learns all of the ropes, and has a great deal of different duties that the state has now assigned the Listers. See, the assessor really is just gonna be doing that very same thing. We will have Nimrik involved, which is the appraiser, as a safeguard, and continue to be the appraiser, which is, I think, what you are speaking to.
Okay, anything else?
And I think we should hire a person to work part-time to do that job. It's just, let's go to a paid position versus having a highly qualified assessor come in and do office work. That's, you know, Betsy can clarify, but that's how I'm reading this as a proposal, and I didn't really want to support that, even though I totally get that we need to have a change. And I do feel we should pay for what we need. It doesn't have to be running for election or an appointment. It can be a paid position. New job.
Okay, no, and I understand your concern. Basically, a lister and assessor are one and the same thing. A lister is an elected official, and an assessor is an appointed. And Clodfelter is an appraiser. That's a big, big difference. It's also a big span and education difference. So the primary lister and assessor basically will do the same thing. So it could be the primary lister then becomes the assessor. I'm not suggesting that, but that's done in towns. So it's typically a primary lister is the one that goes to the educational classes, learns all of the ropes, and has a great deal of different duties that the state has now assigned the listers. See, the assessor really is just going to be doing that very same thing. We will have NIMRIC involved, which is the appraiser, as a safeguard and continue to be the appraiser, which is, I think, what you are speaking to.
Okay, anything else? Ready for the question? Okay, so it sounds like we're...oh, actually, this has to be done by paper ballot, so... We get to start handing out pieces of paper, I guess. Yep? Sure, while we're sending...Lane has a point of order, it sounds like, or a point of personal privilege?
Lane Morrison. Marty, take a look at page 16 on the top, lister. It's not a volunteer position. There's a salary of $26,000. I think the employee is entitled to benefits, Blue Cross Blue Shield. So there's $62,000 in the budget. No longer volunteer. My question would be, if an assessor is the same as a lister, is there a savings to the community by having an assessor or not? And that might be one of the impacts.
Lane?
Lane, to answer your question, my guess is with...if this were to pass, the select board would use the Palmer evaluation method, like we do with all town employees. My guess is the responsibilities of the new assessor, with the roles and responsibilities being the same as the lister,
the elected lister. Can we till after the vote to have this potential discussion? Well, but I mean, well, I mean, if we're still discussing, we should still be discussing. But we're sort of voting and discussing at the same time.
Yeah, he had to ask the question with the mic.
Yeah, I know. I shouldn't have let him do that, probably. Well, we're voting, but I mean, nobody called the question, but I asked if we're ready for a vote, so we started handing out ballots. So if people want to still discuss, don't hand in the votes, but it's a little uncomfortable doing it that way. All right, so don't vote yet if you want to quickly answer his question. So are we clear on what the question is? It's about the salary of the lister and...
What is the impact to the town in terms of costs? There's a $62,000 budget for lister, all the things that have to get done. What's the impact to the budget if we go to two and assessor?
Yeah, it should be no...the same difference. The position that the town would hire should have the same roles and responsibilities as the lister's job description, and should have the same rating in the pay scale.
All right, ready for a vote? Yep, Mike.
Yeah, so what kind of an impact will hiring the assessor have on the reappraisals that have to be done one quarter of a year and then the entire town in one year?
Betsy could speak to that a little. I think the only legal difference would be currently the listers have their own statutory authority. Once, if it does become an appointed or hired position, the management of that position would be with the authority of the select board.
Yeah, that's correct. So if a reappraisal needs to be called, it would be the authority of the select board, and it would probably, again, go through NIMRIC as the appraiser. And so the assessor would just be somewhat of the custodian between those two, so.
Okay, anything else? All right, fill out your ballots. Oh, sure. All right, to question Article Seven, "To be voted by paper ballot." "Will the voters of the town authorize the elimination of the office of lister and replace it with a professionally qualified assessor appointed by the select board, who shall have the same powers, discharge the same duties, proceed in the discharge thereof in the same manner, and be subject to the same liabilities as are prescribed for listers or the board of listers under the provisions of Title 32 VSA?" All right. They want people to come up and... Okay, so bring your ballots up to the box here. Three for all. Yes.
Where's the box?
You see Patrick all the time at the age.
Oh, good. Oh, yeah, he's hard.
It's because of his mother, isn't it?
He's in New Zealand right now. He went over to...
They're all yeses anyway.
Visit his brother, who's there on sabbatical. And there's a little friend in his...
He's too busy gabbing.
Oh, but please come here.
We'll see.
Take care.
You do some projects up there, won't you?
Oh, I...I volunteer.
I know, had a couple sick kids and...
You shouldn't have let everybody get up and walk around, because now they're going to want to stay. They'll go home. What, motion to adjourn? That's it? And you should talk, you're all...
From Route Seven? Yep. I can't see.
I think subdivision rules prohibit people from preventing access to other persons. So when push comes to shove, legally, the town has the right, or whoever owns that person, has the right to an access. And the courts would force what is the most opportune property next door to grant that access. You're not allowed to have, in subdivision rules, a parcel of town access.
Okay, the results are in. It's 70 yes votes and nine no votes, so the motion passes. All right, now we're on to Article Eight, "To transaction other business proper to come before said meeting." So...Patrice.
Thank you. I would like to make an advisory motion for the select board to create a committee to review, perform due diligence, and vet donation requests and report to the select board as part of the normal annual budget process.
Here, a second? Is there any discussion?
I'm sort of opposed...
A name?
Dean Larry. I'm sort of opposed to the motion. Having...I'm a member of a nonprofit organization, and in a neighboring town, we actually have to show up to the meeting in order to receive a donation from the town. And I do kind of like the idea of the voters of a town to specifically decide to whom they're going to donate money. I understand that it might be maybe more efficient for the select board to look at donation requests and make people meet a certain standard before they make a donation and include it in the budget. But it's...seems a bit more democratic for the people to decide to whom the money should go and for those organizations to be directly responsible to the voters. With technology these days, the information that the select board has been receiving could always be put on the town website, so voters could review the submissions from each of the organizations that would like a donation. I wouldn't want to move my voice on these donations to that of just the select board.
Valerie?
Valerie Graham. I understood when we were discussing it that those...that the donations would be listed in the budget, as they are now, under the article they were listed under, and I hope that will still be true.
Yeah, I think that's true. That's just a question of how they...what kind of vetting they would go through to get into the...
We'll still know where the money's going and to which organizations.
Right.
Okay.
Jim Donovan? All right, there's been a motion called question. Is there a second? Valerie seconded it. Okay. Unfortunately, that means you have to stand up again. All those in favor of ceasing debate on Patrice's motion, rise. Okay, you may sit now. All those opposed, stand up. All right, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. We're ready to vote on an advisory motion to form...have the select board form a committee to vet the donations that then would appear in the select board budget. Is that the right? Is that accurate?
Okay. Well, all right.
Okay, "To create a committee to review, perform due diligence, and vet donation requests and report to select board as..." As... Interesting handwriting. "As select board as part of the normal annual budget process." All those in favor of the motion...oh, yes.
It seems like we should hear from the select board how they feel about this.
There's a motion to call a question at this point, so we're...I think it's... It's too late at this point. Yeah, because there's been a motion to second the motion. Now, we're voting on...well, you've already voted. We've ceased debate already. We voted to cease debate. I was just repeating the motion for the vote. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, the motion passes. We're still on Article Eight. In the back there. Right there, yes.
Jeffrey Horbar. Sorry to rate this so late in the meeting, but I would appreciate a report from Fire and Rescue about whether they have the training and materials that they need if they're called to respond to the coronavirus problem, and whether they have any recommendations about additional resources that they might need.
Patrice McAvern, Business Operations Manager. I am not involved in the day-to-day operations of the technical side of the house. Earlier this afternoon, or this morning, both chiefs were here from Rescue and Fire. I don't see anyone here now. I do know that we take guidance...
truth of your words that our house is on fire. A government that sets exploitation of fossil fuel over renewable energy and fails to recognize that the wealth and large size of the American economy imposes on us a moral obligation to make correspondingly large contributions to the solution of the global climate crisis. And I would say if we pass this motion, someone has volunteered to translate it into Swedish, even though Greta does speak English.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay. Mike Yantocca seconded it. Okay, uh, so if I'm gonna read that, I'm gonna need a copy of that, too. Any discussion?
Jade Kaplan. I think it's a wonderful letter. I am in support of it. However, there are people in Charlotte that may not be and that aren't here at the moment to voice their differing opinions, so I would love to be able to sign my name to such a letter, but not in the name of the Town of Charlotte, just in my name.
Okay, Jim Donovan?
I sort of have the same opinion, but I would go a little bit further, that I usually do not like to go into anything negative. I always try to stay positive as much as possible, and so I would object to the negative parts of the letter. But I do also think that it should be from individuals and not from the town, which in theory is representing everybody in Charlotte.
Anything else? Valerie?
Valerie Graham. It is not unusual for the end of the meeting to be as sparsely attended as this, and I think that if you are a member of the town and you want to weigh in on what's going on, you should be here.
Okay. Anything else? Ready for a vote? All right, the vote is on the motion to send this letter to Greta Thunberg. Uh, we are a small town in Vermont, USA, but responding to your words, we offer you big thanks for your courageous and inspirational efforts to make a difference in the global climate crisis. We realize this letter is just words, but we would...we want you to know that we see the importance of your work in showing us a way to move from big words to real deeds while avoiding imaginary and delusional goals. We hope that our youth will follow your call that every single person counts and understand that they can and must make a difference. Finally, we apologize for the greedy priorities of our federal government that ignores the truth of your words that our house is on fire. A government that sets exploitation of fossil fuel over renewable energy and fails to recognize that the wealth and large size of the American economy imposes on us a moral obligation to make correspondingly large contributions to the solution of the global climate crisis. And I would say if we pass this motion, someone has volunteered to translate it into Swedish, even though Greta does speak English. Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay. Mike Yantocca seconded it. Okay, uh, so if I'm gonna read that, I'm gonna need a copy of that, too. Any discussion?
Jade Kaplan. I think it's a wonderful letter. I am in support of it. However, there are people in Charlotte that may not be and that aren't here at the moment to voice their differing opinions, so I would love to be able to sign my name to such a letter, but not in the name of the Town of Charlotte, just in my name.
Okay, Jim Donovan?
I sort of have the same opinion, but I would go a little bit further, that I usually do not like to go into anything negative. I always try to stay positive as much as possible, and so I would object to the negative parts of the letter. But I do also think that it should be from individuals and not from the town, which in theory is representing everybody in Charlotte.
Anything else? Valerie?
Valerie Graham. It is not unusual for the end of the meeting to be as sparsely attended as this, and I think that if you are a member of the town and you want to weigh in on what's going on, you should be here.
Okay. Anything else? Ready for a vote? All right, the vote is on the motion to send this letter to Greta Thunberg. Uh, we are a small town in Vermont, USA, but responding to your words, we offer you big thanks for your courageous and inspirational efforts to make a difference in the global climate crisis. We realize this letter is just words, but we would...we want you to know that we see the importance of your work in showing us a way to move from big words to real deeds while avoiding imaginary and delusional goals. We hope that our youth will follow your call that every single person counts and understand that they can and must make a difference. Finally, we apologize for the greedy priorities of our federal government that ignores the truth of your words that our house is on fire. A government that sets exploitation of fossil fuel over renewable energy and fails to recognize that the wealth and large size of the American economy imposes on us a moral obligation to make a correspondingly large contributions...to make correspondingly large contributions to the solution of the global climate crisis. Sincerely, the Town of Charlotte, Vermont.
Charlie.
Yes?
Is this an advisory motion?
They all are advisory motions. Uh, okay. Ready for a vote on that? All those in favor of the motion to send this letter to Greta Thunberg, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Ooh, that's close. How about all the ayes, stand up, please. And, okay. All right, sit down, and on the nose, stand up. I'm gonna say the ayes have it, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, the motion carries. All right, Bob Mazzaris?
Bob Mazzaris. There's an old saying I'm very fond of bringing up at town meetings, and it's he who speaks the truth shall be chased out of nine villages. So, you can come after me after this is over. I want to address a point which was only casually mentioned a few minutes ago by a gentleman who's now left, and I want to do it very, very carefully, and I want to emphasize the words concern and plan. And I want to speak about the fact that the town is being visited this year by two phenomena. One is the Emerald Ash Bore, which we have a plan in place, and we've budgeted money and we've talked a considerable amount of time about. The other is something we have not mentioned, either from Mike Yantocca at the state level or at the Select Board, and that's what's going to happen in the town to deal with the coronavirus. Roughly eighty percent of us may get this virus. It's gonna come sooner or later. Eighty percent of us will get the virus and have minimal to no symptoms. Those of us who are senior citizens or have previously existing conditions may in fact suffer ill effects of this virus and have to be transported to the hospital. So, I have three questions I want to raise, and they're directed first to Mike. At the state level, when a plan is put together, will this include funding for the individual towns, or will the individual towns have to put money forth in their budgets to deal with whatever is necessary with nursing staff, transportation to the hospital, isolation, whatever? To the VNS, I have a question. Are you included in this plan? Will you be able to visit individual homes of people who have...are quarantined or may have the virus? And who makes the determination that they will have to go to the hospital? Thirdly, the rescue and, uh, health and...the rescue squad, will you be transporting those of us who are seriously ill? And under what conditions will you be able to do this, or will you require a doctor's orders or a positive test result? I've asked a lot of questions here, and if it just points about the things that we don't know, then I have accomplished my objective. I don't want to create panic. I want to raise the questions of concern and plan. Thank you.
Um, okay, so I don't actually know the answer to the question you asked. I do know that the Health Department is looking very closely at it and putting plans in place. Uh, I could...I could find out. I could, uh, you know, look for the answer to your question, find out exactly what kind of financial assistance that the state would be providing to municipalities and to, uh, rescue services and things like that, EMTs. Okay? I'll get back to you. Perhaps I'll write an article on it.
You want to speak to it or all?
I think from the town's point of view, this is gonna be an issue that's mostly gonna be handled by the State Health Department, and, uh, your point to the ambulance is a, you know, they are not a town entity. Uh, they will have their own protocols in place about how to best transport people. We do have, um, under the Select Board's jurisdiction, a deputy health officer, and we can certainly have, uh, him look into at least getting up to speed and stay up to speed on what the guidance is.
What about the emergency management? What's going on with that? Yeah, I mean, there used to be an emergency management plan. Okay. Okay. The ambulance is licensed under districts in the state. Ours is District Number Three, and the person that runs that is a doctor, and they will be setting most of the policies for how the ambulance responds. So, it is not gonna be a local issue, but a district...ambulance district-wide protocol.
My concern is that the wheels of government turn a lot slower than the wheels of virus transmission. I'm hoping we can get those wheels down before we want to hit each other's heads with this.
The wheels of government turn slower than everything. Okay, go ahead.
Jade Kaplan again. So, I had...I didn't know if this would be an advisory motion, or maybe I should just dovetail a gentleman's concern about viral transmission, but I am holding in my hand here one of the most gross vector viral transmit devices that probably is in this room, except there's at least two of them. And I mentioned to a few people at the beginning of this meeting, it would be nice if maybe we had some alcohol-based wipes that would be used in between the use of these microphones. Um, I got...and that got zip response on that one. Um, so, I think if we're going to be a town and we're going to have public gatherings in the interest of the town, it would be good to make a commitment, uh, to address public health issues in reasonable and small ways. So, at future, my advice or my advisory motion would be, if that's even an appropriate way to deal with this, that we have wipes at meetings like this and that we employ them in the use of this microphone. I don't think everybody has to use...you know, everybody can bring their own personal stuff, but when it comes to a public, um, tool, I think the responsible thing would be to address it in that way. I do want...I do want to mention that the demographic in this room is the demographic that's at highest risk for serious illness from this new virus, and I also want to mention that it is moving from, um, you know, transmission from certain target, um, demographics to community-acquired. And we do have a case now at...from a Dartmouth Hitchcock worker, it's been confirmed. So, it's...it could already be here, we just don't know it yet.
Lane Morrison again. Um, I would like to recognize the hard work, and it's already been mentioned earlier, for the library, but the hard work, um, for a retiring Select Board member. Fritz Taggert is retiring in about probably fifteen minutes. He really has done a fabulous job. He is so understated of all the things he does. He's been climbing the roof of the town hall to see if we need a new roof. He does the library work. He's just out there all the time, and I just...we're really gonna miss him, and he's...thank you for all your work.
Right in the middle. Right in the middle. Oh, you got one, okay. Go ahead. All right, go ahead.
Are we...are we ready for a new motion? Are we still...
Yes, yes.
Okay. This is...oh, yes.
Got your name.
Catherine Bach. Uh, this is from the Global Rights of Nature's Alliance, and there's also a national and a Vermont Rights of Nature Alliance. Um, and this motion is that the Town of Charlotte shall petition for the passage of an amendment to the Constitution of the State of Vermont to recognize in law the inherent and unalienable rights of nature. So, it would basically be saying that each ecosystem has a right to be defended as much as corporations and people. So, I can read the legal, um, motion. It'll be, um, Chapter One, Article Twenty-Two in the Vermont Constitution. And it would read that the natural environment of Vermont, including its forests, natural areas, surface and groundwater, and fish and wildlife populations, has inherent rights to clean water and air, to health uncompromised by anthropogenic substances damaging to the systems of life, and to flourishing connected habitats which support the well-being of flora and fauna of Vermont. Each...every person in this state shall have recourse to the laws for all violations of this article, with damages recurring in full to the injured environmental system to ensure its prompt restoration.
Is there a second? Second one, Susan.
Oh.
Okay. Okay. I need a copy of that, too, just to read. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, we're gonna vote on the article. The Town of Charlotte shall petition for the passage of an amendment to the Constitution of the State of Vermont to recognize in law the inherent and unalienable rights of nature. Proposed amendment wording, Chapter One, Article Twenty-Two, Rights of Nature. Quote, "That the natural environment of Vermont, including its forests, natural areas, surface and groundwater, and fish and wildlife populations, has certain natural inherent and unalienable rights to clean water and air, to health uncompromised by anthropogenic substances damaging to the systems of life, and to flourishing connected habitats which support the well-being of the flora and fauna of Vermont. Every person in this state shall have recourse to the laws for all violations of this article, with damages recurring in full to the injured environmental system to ensure its prompt restoration." All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Ooh, let's try that again. All those in favor, stand, please. Okay, you may sit now. All those against, stand, please. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, the motion passes. Although it was close. Okay, then, with that over there. Uh, next one. Oh, actually, Peter Nobes. Yeah, sorry, Peter. You blend into the background there, sorry.
Peter Nobes. Uh, I think it's too late, but I really missed the Fire and Rescue report, which I thought was gonna be presented earlier today. So, my advisory motion would be that we include that report to the town meeting when the majority of attendees are still here, especially given the budget increases in their budgets this year. Thanks.
Do you want to make that a...okay. A motion, okay. Is there a second? Second, okay, by Marty. All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion to include a report from Fire and Rescue in next year's town meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, the motion carries. Um, anybody but, uh, Mo?
I want to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, there's been a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? A second? All those in favor...I don't even know if you're supposed to discuss this, but...what's that? I don't know his name.
David Glanshine.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, that's right. All right, I gotta consult my handy dandy chart here to see if the motion to adjourn. Oh, you can't debate it. All right, all those in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, we're all done. Thank you.